Good morning, everyone. Let's go ahead and get settled in. Thank you all for being here today. It is August 20th and the day of our Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. Thank you all for attending. Unfortunately, our pastor this morning has gotten stuck in traffic, so we will have a moment of silence in lieu of an invocation. That will be followed by the pledge. For those of you who are willing, please join me in our moment of silence. Thank you. You may rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our meeting is now called to order, and I will turn things over to our zoning manager, John Peterson, to walk us through today's agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. We would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are here when their case is called. After that, we're going to call to see if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand and raise their hand so they can be counted for the official record. Then after recognizing both parties, both parties will be asked to come forward, be sworn in. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case of concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so you want to convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. After both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, it may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. After that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn without prejudice. That's other business item number 42 of 2024, Portico Properties, Inc. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been held or continued, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z2 of 2024, Floranoia Development Group, LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the September 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z2 of 2024 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z9 of 2024, Thomas Orc. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the September 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z9 of 2024 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z32 of 2024, Emily G. Dunn. This case was continued by the staff until the September 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z32 of 2024 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z35 of 2024, Chuck Awuzu. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the September 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z35 of 2024 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z37 of 2024, Bosco IKEA Canon. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the September 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so rezoning case Z37 of 2024 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z39 of 2024, Asher Homes, Inc., LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the September 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so Z39 of 2024 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z40 of 2024, Elite Engineering. This case was continued by the staff until the September 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so Z40 of 2024 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z43 of 2024, Campus Realty Advisors, LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the September 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so Z43 of 2024 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z44 of 2024, Manor Restorations, LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the September 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so Z44 of 2024 will not be heard today. And finally, SLEP 9 of 2024, Campus Realty Advisors, LLC. This case was continued by staff until the September 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so SLEP 9 of 2024 will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, there are a number of cases that have been contacted about that need to be continued here at the board. First case is rezoning case Z25 of 2024 and SLEP 6 of 2024, which is LCD Acquisitions, LLC and Town Park Renaissance, LLC. We did get a letter last week, Madam Chair and Board, from the applicant who wishes to work on their plan, so the staff would ask the board to continue Z25 and SLEP 6 until your September hearing date.
Yes, Commissioner Burrow.
Because we got the letter of continuance late, and it has to be voted on today, can you do an early head count for or against?
Sure.
Before, because people may have shown up.
Okay, we'll do one for the opposition first. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to rezoning case Z25 and SLEP 6? Please stand up, raise your hands.
How many?
Okay, let the record show there's 39 people here opposed to rezoning case Z25 and SLEP 6. Can I get a show of people here who are in support of rezoning case Z25 and SLEP 6? None. Okay, let the record show there's no one here in support of Z25 or SLEP 6.
And how many opposed, John?
39.
39?
Yeah.
So I make a motion to continue Z25 and SLEP 6, because that goes with it.
Yes.
To the September zoning hearing.
And that be the 17th.
September 17th zoning hearing.
Second. All right, is there any discussion? Call the question. Oh, Commissioner Gamble, go ahead. I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
I'd like the court to, or the clerk to record my statement that was emailed to the clerk last August 13th of 2024.
Okay, thank you.
And I just submitted mine to the clerk as well.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Next case is rezoning case Z30 of 2024, which is Bentley Residential Properties, LLC, Summer Our Properties, LLC, the estate of James W. Bentley and James W. Bentley Jr. Madam Chair and Board, this case needs some more work, and the applicant needs to work through some staff comments, so the staff would ask the board to continue rezoning case Z30 of 2024 until your September hearing date.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to continue Z30 to the September 17th zoning hearing with direction to...
Meet with the fire department and DOT.
Fire.
And DOT.
DOT and water, if there is anything, or all departments necessary. Thank you.
Second. All right. Are there any questions, or is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, we forgot to ask if there's anyone here for Z30.
Let's go ahead and take that count, too.
Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z30 of 2024, Bentley Residential Properties, LLC?
Any in support?
Is there anyone here in support of the application? And he's not here today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next case is rezoning case Z33 of 2024, Dwyer Properties, LLC. Madam Chair and Board, the applicant does need to work on this plan to resolve a buffer issue, so the staff would ask the board to continue rezoning case Z33 of 2024 to your September hearing date.
All right, Commissioner Sheffield.
I make a motion. I make a motion to hold Z33 to the September 17th Board of Commissioners planning hearing.
Second.
Zoning hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. He said planning hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Zoning hearing.
Thank you, Chair.
Continue.
We're continuing. The case hasn't been heard, all right? Yes.
Well, not by us anyway.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. Okay. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next case, Madam Chair and Board, is the staff would request that the board continue other business item number 38 of 2024, Nasheed Ahmed. There was an issue posting with the sign, Madam Chair and Board, so the staff would ask the board to continue other business item number 38 to your September hearing date.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, and since this was heard last time, do we hold or do we continue?
It'd be continued this time.
Okay, great, continue. My motion is to continue OB 38 to the next zoning hearing.
All right, I'll second. Is there any discussion or any comments or questions?
We can take a count, because I do know that some members from the community came today, too.
Okay.
Okay. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to other business item number 38 of 2024, Nasheed Ahmed? Please stand up and raise your hand. Okay, let the record show there's six people here opposed. Is there anyone here in support of the application? There's one person in support.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Okay, and the last one I have, Madam Chair and Board, is other business item number 49 of 2024, Amanda Penetti and STNL Development. This case needs to be continued, Madam Chair and Board, because I need to work on some of the staff comments that were put into the other business item, so the staff would ask the board to continue other business item number 49 until your September hearing date.
Okay, Commissioner Sheffield.
I make a motion to continue OB 49 to the September 17th Board of Commissioners zoning hearing.
Second.
All right, are there any comments or questions? Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. And John, for clarification, can you tell me the first two cases that were in District 3?
Z25 and SLEP 6.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, before we start the hearing, I want to ask the audience to please turn your cell phones off or the volume off. If the phones ring, it does interfere with the broadcast and the presentations, and I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at your discretion. At this time, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for August 20th, 2024. First case on consent is rezoning case Z36 of 2024, DRB Group, Georgia, LLC. Request rezoning from GC to RM12 for Townhome Community in Land Lot 209 of the 20th District. Property is located on the southeast side of Lodge Road, east of Greers Chapel Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z36 to the RM12 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on June 5th, 2024, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, final home elevations to be approved by the district commissioner. Number three, variances contained in the zoning division comments or recommendations. Number four, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Number five, fire department comments or recommendations. Number six, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. And number seven, water and sewer division comments or recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z36? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z41 of 2024, Eastwood Homes of Georgia, LLC. Request rezoning from R20 to RSL for residential senior living for non-support of residential units in land lots 488 and 489 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Paddles Springs Road, south of Heritage Green Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z41 to the RSL zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated July 29th, 2024. Number two, maximum number of dwelling units to be 22, with the district commissioner approving the final site plan. Number three, district commissioner to approve the final building elevations. Number four, fire department comments or recommendations. Number five, water and sewer division comments or recommendations. Number six, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. And number seven, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z41? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Yeah. Hold on, I just need to add something to that. I just needed to update the record to reflect an updated stipulation letter. I haven't. Okay. I just want to add that Z41 is approved to the RSL zoning district, subject to the letter of agreeable conditions from Kevin Moore dated August 19th, 2024, and all other staff recommendations not otherwise in conflict. Just essentially including the updated stip letter, which you guys should have. Thanks. Did the applicant hear those stipulations? Okay, and you're good? Thank you.
Okay. Next one is rezoning case Z42 of 2024, FHNL Holdings, LLC. Request rezoning from NS to NRC for an auto spa in Land Lot 107 of the 16th District. The property is located on the north side of Sandy Plains Road, west of Alabama Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z42 to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated July 30th, 2024. Number two, hours of operation shall be Monday through Saturday from 8:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m., and Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Number three, no backlighting on the car wash building. Number four, signage shall use stacked stone. Number five, maximum tower height to be 35 feet. And number six, staff comments or recommendations not otherwise in conflict. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z42? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. First one is LEP 24 of 2024. Doris La Boy requests a temporary land use permit renewal for daycare in Land Lot 87 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of Windy Hill Road and on the west side of Fable Road. Staff recommends approval of LUP 24 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on May 21st, 2024, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, maximum of 47 children. Number three, off-stair road design guidelines must be meant for any future site improvements. Number four, fire department comments or recommendations. Number five, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. Number six, water and sewer division comments or recommendations. Number seven, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 24? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Just a slight change. It should be Dorcas, D-O-R-C-A. As I saw in all the records, it says Doria.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next case is SLEP 8, Lake Bondurant. Request a special land use permit for a baseball complex in Land Lots 86 and 87 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Jamison Road and on the east side of Lake Drive and on the west side of Lee Waters Road. Staff recommends approval of SLEP 8, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan dated August 19th, 2024, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, district commissioner to approve final building elevation, architecture and elevations. Number three, variances contained in the zoning comments or recommendations. Number four, fire department comments or recommendations. Number five, water and sewer division comments or recommendations. Number six, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Number seven, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. And number eight, install protective netting at least 40 feet in height on the field adjacent to Jamison Road and Lee Waters Road. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP 8? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, John, for the record, I'd like to add stormwater comments that were revised on June 28th, 2024, and also the updated site plan as a result of those comments that we received August 19th, 2024.
Okay, moving into other business cases on the consent agenda. First case is other business item number 45 of 2024, which is to consider amending the stipulations for Chuck Awuzu regarding rezoning application Z47 of 2013. The property is located on the east side of Old Anderson Farm Drive, south of Paddles Springs Road, in Land Lots 789 and 840 of the 19th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to number one, fire department comments, and number two, Cobb DOT comments. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 45? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number 46 of 2024 is to consider a reduction of required minimum public road frontage from 75 feet to 30 feet for Roger D. Sloan and Linda A. Sloan. The property is located on the north side of Bates Road, east of Floyd Road, in Land Lot 998 and 999 of the 18th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to number one, water and sewer comments; number two, fire department comments; and number three, Cobb DOT comments. Madam Chair and Board, the applicant did contact us last night, and they are sick right now, so if it's okay with the board, we'll keep this on consent. And is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 46?
There is one in opposition.
One? Okay.
We'll just continue.
Okay, we'll pull that one.
And add it to September.
So what we're doing, Madam Chair and Board, the staff would ask the board to continue this case until your September hearing date, since the applicant cannot come in today.
Commissioner Sheffield.
I make a motion to continue, is it OB 46, to the September 17th Board of Commissioners hearing.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Okay, last item on consent is other business item number 47 of 2024, which is to consider amending the stipulations for Gaskins and La Croix regarding rezoning application Z43 of 2017. The property is located on the north side of Hurt Road and on the east side of Floyd Road, in Land Lot 848 and 849 of the 19th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, stormwater management comments; number two, fire department comments; and number three, Cobb DOT comments with either a D-cell lane or wider turning radius on Floyd Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 47? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the printed consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have anything to add? Commissioner Burrow.
Yes. John, can we add OB 48 to the consent agenda and see if anyone's for or against?
Okay. Other business item number 48 of 2024 is to consider amending the stipulations for Jennifer Pacwin regarding rezoning application Z169 of 2003. The property is located on the west side of Chastain Meadows Parkway, north of Roberts Trail, in Land Lots 571, 572, and 582 of the 16th District. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 48? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Are there any other matters to add, Commissioners? Okay. Did you have a comment? Okay. So Commissioners, I'd ask that we approve the consent agenda. Yes, do you have something else?
You don't have to motion that.
I'm not, I'm trying to pass the consent agenda. Okay. All right, it's okay. Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised, and John, just to clarify, I have here that we've removed other business item 46 and 49 from consent.
Correct.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Chair, can we get a motion first to add OB 48?
Okay, thank you. That's what you were saying. Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to add OB 48 to the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll second it. Is there any discussion to add that to consent? Okay. Not hearing any, we'll call the question.
I think the clerk is trying to tell us.
Are there any stipulations for OB 48?
Do you have stipulations for 48, Commissioner?
Not other than, well, other than what's in the...
Would you like us to refer to the Planning Commission?
What did you just read into the record?
Well, I just read in the, you know, what they're asking for. As far as stipulations, if the board wants to consider, subject to the elevations contained in the other business packet, and then number two, all previous conditions not in concert or meaning effect. Okay, thank you.
Would you like to add what John said?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and call the question. The motion carries 4-0. Again, recognizing Commissioner Gamble is not present, we'll go ahead and continue with the motion for consent. I think we had a motion, and we have a second already, so we'll call the question. The motion carries 4-0. For anyone who's been here for any matter that was on consent, you are free to leave at this time, unless you want to stay here for the rest of the zoning hearing, and you're more than welcome to do so. But we will pick up with our regular cases after those associated with consent exit the auditorium. All right, John, you can begin whenever you're ready.
Okay, moving into the... Okay, moving into the held and continued agenda. First case we're going to hear today is rezoning case Z fifteen of two thousand and twenty-three. SDP Acquisitions LLC requests rezoning from R twenty, RA four, GC, O and I, NS, and OS to RA four, RA five, and RM eight, which has now been revised to RA six, for townhomes and single-family detached houses in land lots three sixty-four, three sixty-five, four twenty-eight, and four twenty-nine of the sixteenth district. Uh, the property is located on the south side of Chastain Road and on the west side of Chastain Meadows Parkway. The applicant is present. Can I get a show of people here, uh, who are opposed to this? Okay, thirty-eight. Let the record show there's thirty-eight people here, uh, opposed to rezoning case Z thirty-eight. Can I get a show of people here who are in support of rezoning case Z fifteen? Please stand up and raise your hands. One, okay. Let the record show there's one person.
There's more, one moment, John.
Five, okay. Let the record show there's five people here in support of rezoning case Z fifteen of two thousand and twenty-three. And with that, back to the board.
Thank you, John.
Five.
Kevin, you can begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. Good morning, and this, I'm Kevin Moore, here on behalf of SDP Acquisitions, the applicant in this application for rezoning concerning, uh, over fifty-seven acres that's located at the intersection of, uh, three major roads, I five seventy-five, the interstate, Chastain Road on the north side, uh, and Chastain Meadows Parkway. Both those roads are major arterials, uh, that's located to the north and borders this property, and Chastain Meadows to the east and borders this property. Uh, this property, uh, some of you, uh, who have been on this commission for, for more than just a handful of years, have seen this property numerous times, and have seen this property come in for rezoning, have seen multiple plans that have come in for proposal for development of what is a critical piece of property. It's over fifty-seven acres located at the intersection of a major interstate and two major arterials, Chastain Road and Chastain Meadows. When you look at the, uh, map that's on your screen now, uh, you can see the surrounding area, what this property is considered. You can see that this property is zoned to multiple zoning categories, R twenty, office institutional, NS, GC, O and I, RA four, and also office services, that's part of this zoning that makes up this fifty-seven acres. We are proposing today a rezoning to the RA six category for a maximum of three hundred and forty-three residential for-sale homes. This property and in this area also is within a community activity center. It's within a CAC on this property. What has been proposed in the past and what does this property really demand? See, if you, what does this property really demand when you review it and see it, given its context? It's demanded what's been proposed before, but never successful. What's been asked before and requested before is distribution facilities on this property. What's been asked and requested before is apartments and combination of large commercial developments. What's been proposed before is combinations of distribution facilities, apartments, and commercial, uh, for this property. We have been meeting with the community, uh, for over a year, just on this one application. That's what this property, when you look at it on paper, demands, that level of intensity and density for a development. But for the first time, what's being proposed to you today is all residential, all for-sale residential, mixed townhomes, single-family detached homes for this property at a maximum of three hundred and forty-three units. We're going to turn to the site plan, and what I want you to think about, hopefully, as you consider this today, is, is this is not just a good plan for development of this property, considering its context, considering the comments, considering the community input, but it's a great plan to settle development finally for this property. So let me turn to the site plan and go through that with you. Again, to orient you, five seventy-five is along the western boundary, Chastain Road, along the northern, Chastain Meadows Parkway, the two major arterials, along the eastern boundary. What is proposed for this fifty-seven acres is an RA six community that would be built by Ashton Homes, one of our leading highest-quality home builders in the Atlanta metropolitan area. What is proposed overall are detached, single-family homes that would be rear-loaded along Chastain Road, which is highly important for the community and has been something that they have requested for years. Also included are townhomes, uh, in this portion of the property, and townhomes in this portion of the property. These townhomes that are on Chastain Meadows are rear-loaded cha, are rear-loaded townhomes so that you can provide for great aesthetics and visual as you come down Chastain Meadows. In addition, we have single-family detached homes in this area here, uh, providing for a mixture of residential product and a mixture of residential home prices. Home prices are anticipated to be from the high four hundreds to the eight hundreds, and you're able to provide for a variety and a mixture of product for homes and for home buyers. You're able to provide with this fifty-seven acres an extensive amenity and open park areas as well that are dispersed throughout the property. You have open park areas here and central located, you have other green space and pocket parks areas also throughout the property. The, um, developmental constraints on this property are a stream that runs through the middle. That stream in prior, every single prior application, applications have proposed to either eliminate or pipe over that stream through the special permitting process that would be allowed by the federal government. This proposal does not. It protects that stream. Every single proposal that I have seen prior to this did not in full, which this proposal does. In addition, this proposal does include a condition that if approved, a traffic light would be installed at the intersection of the major entrance here that aligns with the Chastain Lake subdivision on Chastain Road. Likewise, that has been an important component, uh, to the community's concerns throughout, uh, the history of this property. The applicant is proposing to fund that traffic signal if approved. We also have provided for extensive buffers along this western boundary against five seventy-five and the southern boundary against the OS property that surrounds this, uh, particular subject property. These buffers, essentially a sixty-foot buffer along five seventy-five, which is a combination of undisturbed, planted, and berms along that entire frontage to provide for more than sufficient and an outstanding buffer. The same goes for, uh, the southern side against the OS distribution facility that is being constructed now. This buffer provides, again, for a forty-foot expanded, natural, planted, and bermed buffer, but keeping in mind that the OS property has a thirty-foot landscape buffer as well. So you have a seventy-foot effective buffer on the southern side to protect these residents and to, again, provide for an excellent overall plan. As we've met and met and met as part of this rezoning, keeping in mind that this rezoning application has now been pending almost a full year. This rezoning application began with a mixed-use project composed of distribution facilities, commercial and residential, and included senior apartments. Since that time, since the beginning of the year, we've continued to meet and continued to evolve this dynamic plan so that we can present to you today a full residential for-sale plan with many, many stipulations that are included within our letter that have been requested by the community. Why do we have opposition today? Because we couldn't quite get there. We just couldn't quite get there. The community wants a total of two hundred and ninety-six homes. We can't go that far. At two hundred and ninety-six homes, we do, we don't have a deal, we don't have an economically viable project at that level. At three hundred and forty-three homes, we do. That's a fifteen percent difference is all we're talking about between economic viability for this project and not. In addition, the community had requested larger buffers along the five seventy-five and southern border. They were requesting a hundred-foot buffers. We just think that's unreasonable. We think the effect of sixty- and seventy-foot buffers that we have provided are more than sufficient, more than adequate, and will completely provide for the screening and the buffering that will be needed here. Again, this plan represents to you a significant departure from everything this board has seen for this property, both in the past and up until a couple of months ago, as we began working through this project. This plan represents several significant concessions, several significant changes to address and incorporate community's concerns. We couldn't get there, and that's okay, that happens. We respectfully just agreed to disagree on a final couple of points because that, again, is the difference between a successful project that can be executed properly at a location that demands intensity and density. Today, we believe very strongly that denial of this application is not defensible. I understand that may be some strong language, but we believe it wholeheartedly. This plan in this location represents a time to put this to bed, to have a development that doesn't include the intensity and density of apartments, which have been strongly opposed for years here, of distribution facilities, despite the fact that on two sides of this property, it is surrounded by distribution and office services types of development. This plan does not include that. We think that this plan actually is defensible and is justifiable, given the work that's been done to date and given what really should occur here, and that is a fabulous residential community to be built by one of our best builders, Ashton Homes. This plan incorporates all that can be incorporated, and we ask that you respectfully approve this plan with our list of stipulations. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from opposition, and keep in mind, if there are multiple speakers, that you have a total of ten minutes for all speakers.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tulun Avard, and I am with the Bells Ferry Civic Association. I'm here representing area subdivisions and residents. Today, thirty-eight area residents put their hands up in opposition, and dozens have submitted comments on the county zoning portal, asking you to deny this rezoning quest as proposed. I am representing others who do not, who do and want to state for the record that they live within the requested distance to have legal standing to oppose C fifteen, along with legal standing to sue and appeal as applicable. For the record, we'd like to state that under the original and county home rule maps, this pro, property is in District Three, and under the general assembly map, it is under District Two. As the BOC is aware, the site has gone through several rezoning requests over the past few years. We have appreciated the support of the BOC and its willingness and patience to wait until there is a mutually acceptable rezoning solution on the table between a developer and the community. The BFCA agrees that there is definitely a need in Cobb County for more residential housing of varying price points. This type of development is a desirable option for this property, but we are not in support of the current proposal since, first and foremost, it is too intense and does not adhere to code. And there are serious issues with deforestation, stormwater, and buffers. The BFCA appreciated meeting with the applicant and their lawyer several times. We were able to come to an agreement on several issues. We could not, however, agree on the following important points: density, no variances, size of townhomes, size of buffers, stormwater issues, and the fact that a traffic light needs to be installed at the intersection of Chastain Lakes Drive and the new development's entrance exit on Chastain Road, regardless if DOT says it's warranted or not. This rezoning case was last heard by the BOC on December nineteenth. The board agreed to the rezoning of a PVC, but not OS and warehouses, since the property is in a community activity center in the flume. This case was held to give the applicant an opportunity to bring back a revised site plan that would include and incorporate, quote, "recommendations" from the ARC and DIAR report and include no variances. Neither of these have been incorporated. The applicant has submitted a site plan for medium-density residential development before RA six, meaning six units per acre, which belongs in a rack. In addition, according to county zoning staff, almost a dozen substantial variances have been included. Therefore, the request does not even adhere to the RA six requirements regarding minimum lot area, minimum setbacks, and minimum foundation separation. With all the added variances, no such zoning category exists because it is too intense. For that very reason, variances are the rare exception, not the rule. The zoning division noted that the developer needed to reduce the number of units from three hundred and forty-three to two ninety-six, but they have not. This is not acceptable to the county or the community. The county recommends RA six along with RA four and RA five. The developer changed the entire development to RA six with forty-five percent impervious. By doing so, the townhome portion can remain disproportionately dense. The development needs to be a true medium-density residential with no more than five units per acre to stay consistent with area residential neighborhoods. This intense development will have few trees remaining and have inadequate open or green space. It appears that less than five of the site's fifty-seven acres are to be retained as open space, and it is unclear how much of this will remain wooded. Since this is an MDR, there are no requirements for green space, so there are no safeguards to ensure that these areas will remain open space during the site plan review process where there is no public input. For instance, the three-story townhomes are only eighteen feet wide, with the garage entrance being only sixteen feet. This developer claims that the garage can accommodate two cars, and yet other builders disagree and sell their eighteen-foot townhomes as one-and-a-half-car garages. The overhead shows why. At over twelve hundred square feet, five adults with cars could live there. There would not be enough parking for them all, and what is now green space could become parking lots in the site plan review process. The site consists of fifty-eight heavily forested areas. Intense deforestation will cause damage, erosion, and sedimentation concerns, as well as noise, air, and visual pollution to the development and surrounding neighborhoods. The county needs to ensure that some sort of protection is left in place for area residents. The only trees that are being saved by the applicant are the ones in the cell tower area and those that are required to remain in the undisturbed stream buffer, which is roughly only nine hundred trees out of a total of sixteen thousand. For the record, Andrew Heath from Cobb County Stormwater has confirmed that this property is not included in the Kepler BTS hydrology exemption waiver, which allowed area properties to be exempt from providing separate detention or stormwater management facilities. This applicant is trying to circumvent the issue by including stipulation twenty-six. This waiver is not applicable to this piece of property. This site must meet all stormwater management requirements on its own, especially since the vast majority of the property will be clear-cut and graded to lie in a valley. The stormwater runoff will bypass a Chastain Meadows stormwater facility and run directly into Noonday Creek. Residents along the creek have had their flood insurance rise substantially throughout the years. What gives this developer the right to deforest one of the last large undisturbed parcels of land in the county and then demand a stormwater waiver to increase their profits? Yet later, the county will have to come back and clean up the issues this has caused at taxpayers' expense. And on that note, no stream buffer variances or penetration should be allowed as well, as this is an environmentally sensitive area, as noted by county staff under specific area policy guidelines. Despite the fact that this revised plan did not trigger new ARC development or regional impact study, the impact remains the same on this piece of property, as the intensity hasn't changed and the grading plan for the site is exact, exact same as the previous rezoning request. Therefore, the recommendation needs to be incorporated as originally stated at the December BOC zoning meeting. As noted by the ARC, this project site is one of the last remaining large wooded parcels in the area and provides critical heat island mitigation, urban cooling functions, and reduction of noise and air pollution from I five seventy-five. As climate change accelerates, these services become increasingly important. As stated in the report, retention of additional wooded areas, including a substantial buffer along I five seventy-five, would be supportive of regional environmental policies, as well as the county's green plant, green print plan for conserving land of an environmental value. In addition, the county's code of ordinance is also addresses the importance of protecting trees. The applicant's proposed thirty-five feet mainly landscape, not natural buffer along I five seventy-five is not sufficient. They're including a twenty-five-foot berm that has been added to the newest site plan due to the grading requirements of the property. The landscape berm will never replace the height of the existing trees, which provide a much-needed noise and pollution buffer. There are few trees in the right of way, despite what the applicants, well, they were going to show you a drawing, that added all these trees in the right of way. Um, but basically, it's a thirty-five-foot buffer against five seventy-five. Keeping the existing trees is especially important now that the development will lie in a valley below the I five seventy-five highway grade. A few years ago, the county erroneously allowed Skinnell to clearcut thirty acres and build two five hundred thousand square feet combined warehouses with forty-two loading docks each adjacent to this property, as shown on the overhead. That's a photo from yesterday. They are in vast contrast to the other nearby OS buildings, which are smaller and do not operate twenty-four-seven. Originally was pegged to be an Amazon distribution center, but that company fortunately pulled out. However, now we are waiting to see who will utilize them. Skinnell has them listed as industrial warehouses, which is not a permitted Skanel has them listed as industrial warehouses, which is not permitted use. When the county was asked what recourse they had to keep this from happening, their response was nothing. In addition, the warehouses were permitted to use an additional 100,000 square feet over the allowable square feet allowance for the business park area. Why? Why is the county not adhering to their own zoning codes and policies? Area residents are not paying the price, having to be stuck with two massive warehouses that are slated, according to DOT, to generate over 2,000 truck vehicle trips a day 24/7. They were allowed to clearcut the property, only leaving a minimal natural buffer trees, which has caused increased noise and air pollution from I-575. This is what happens when zoning codes are ignored to the detriment of area residents. Overall, the density is too intense. Nothing in their proposal justifies a higher density. The number of units need to be reduced, and the development encircled with larger natural tree buffers to ensure quality product that will sell well and protect the health of the inhabitants and those in the surrounding neighborhoods. You must consider what the long-term effects of your decision will be on hundreds, if not thousands, of Cobb County residents. We are in support of a medium-density residential development, but one that is built to code with no variances. Let them have an RA6, but no variances. Their profit margin does not matter. The current application is under the guise of being MDR, but due to all the variances, is high-density residential. None of these variances benefit the residents or owners of the proposed units or those in the surrounding community. It's been a long road, and we're getting closer to a mutually agreed-upon residential development. Please recognize area residents' valid concerns. It wasn't easy for all these people to be here today in opposition, but they value their home values, their health, and quality of life. They voted for you to represent them, and they are counting on you to do the right thing. In summary, this proposed site plan is not ready for approval. More work needs to be done. This is not a good face submission from the applicant. Therefore, we respectfully request that you deny this extremely intense development which does not adhere to county zoning codes. We all witnessed what happened with the Skanel property and their warehouses, and we did not deserve or expect this to happen to us again. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We've got to resume our meeting, thank you. There are 21 seconds remaining in opposition, not in support, but in opposition. There was no additional time that was remaining for anyone in support. I'm sorry. Yes, unfortunately, all that time was utilized by the applicant for support, and I didn't see you standing, I apologize. There is, well, again, typically, there's 10 minutes for support and 10 minutes in opposition. There's been a request, and I would defer to our county attorney to give us some guidance, but typically, there's a set amount of time for each side.
I don't know what the request is.
To have someone speak in opposition, even though opposition has utilized their full 10 minutes. Excuse me, in support. We just heard from opposition. They have 20 seconds remaining, but those in support.
It's up to the board, if the board wants to, but you're correct. The first, all the 10 minutes was used and there's 21 seconds left, so it's up to the board if you want to give. I would just, you'd give the same opportunity to both sides if you do that.
Usually, I do that when there's no time left, and actually, those in opposition had time left on their clock. So for those in opposition, is there a desire to have additional time to speak? No. For the board, is there a desire to have someone speak in support, even though their time has run?
If you would please put on your mics, everybody can hear what you're saying.
You have to put your mic on so that the conversation can be heard.
My comments were, I'm okay with hearing from support, other than the applicant. I'm okay with giving equal time to both sides.
Okay, and again, there was equal time given. There was equal time given.
Right, I'm sorry, I meant if we allowed someone to speak in support, if we add additional time to opposition, although there is no one else here in opposition.
Okay, to speak, or no one else to speak in opposition.
I would like to at least hear from one, maybe someone from opposition, to be okay with someone from the community speaking in support as opposed to...
I ask this because this is a stretch. You know, we have several regular meetings where there's been additional people that have asked to speak, where we've been pretty much a stickler about not extending additional time. So I just want us to have very solid reasoning why that should be done in this instance, particularly when opposition had additional time and didn't use it. If they had no time left and ran over, then I can see providing a supportive side more time, but that is not what's taking place here.
Did the applicant go over?
No.
They were right at the 10 minutes.
They were right at the 10 minutes.
And there's 20 seconds left on the opposition.
Right. Okay, I just want you to know that this will be referred to when there are other requests to ask for additional time. And I would ask for those that are supportive of this to be as mindful of those other opportunities when people desire to speak. All right, so we'll go ahead and allow the supportive speaker to speak for additional 20 seconds. And what I will do is if someone in opposition desires to come back up and speak, I will give you 40 seconds to respond.
Chairwoman, I'm sorry, how much time do you want me to?
She'll have 20 seconds, I'll give her 20 seconds, but because we're giving her 20 seconds, we need to give opposition the same amount of time. So I'll give them additional 40 seconds.
What I said I would support was her using the 20 seconds left, not going over on the applicant's time. But that's okay, if that's what you're ruling, go ahead.
Go ahead, ma'am, you have 20 seconds, and we'll give...
Madam Chair, Commission Chairman. I wanted to come and tell you that we have had multiple meetings with the developer, and I have been in the business of housing for over 40 years.
Got to be very quick.
This is probably one of the best designs we've seen, BEC. I live closest to this property. My house is the closest to this property in BEC. We have not taken a vote in BEC to support this.
Okay, ma'am, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
We'll give opposition, if they would like 40 seconds to speak, opportunity to do so.
I hope that you have a clock that will keep track of my 40 seconds.
We do, in fact, you should see that up there.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, if you can just hold one moment.
We're resetting the clock that you, there'll be a timer up there where you're speaking. See, if you could show where that...
Oh, here it is.
Okay, you see it, okay. And if you can state your name for the record before you begin, please.
Thank you, my name is Janet Peters. I lived in the Piedmont Hills subdivision for the last 40 years. I've been there since 1984. I have been here opposing zoning that should never have been approved because it's high-density. This particular one, I feel, is fine, but they need to adhere to the RA6 with no variances. That is the way it is written in the rules, and I cannot see deviating from it. I have seen a lot of bad, high-density zoning all up and down and around the area I live in, which is Piedmont Hills. And this will be, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. All right, we'll now turn things over to the Commissioner.
I'd first like to call Leah up, DOT.
Good morning, Leah Florin, DOT.
Good morning. I know you sent us a revised DOT comment dated 8/19 that I will submit for the record. But I really want to speak about the traffic signal. Right now, getting in and out of Chastain Lakes is an issue with nothing there. And all the meetings we had with the different subdivisions, neighborhoods, all want and need a traffic signal to line up with the entrance proposed here directly across from Chastain Lakes entrance. So we did a traffic, I mean, a signal study.
Yes, ma'am.
And, well, actually, a signal study was done when the warehouses were proposed under the RMA, RM whatever category. And I think you told me it was barely warranted, but it didn't just meet the standards and requirements.
Correct, yes.
With the warehouses.
Correct, with the heavy traffic.
And more mixed use.
Yes, ma'am.
With retail, commercial, and housing.
Yes.
Apartments, okay. So this one with just residential does not meet it.
It does not meet.
However, and I don't like to do this, but this is critical for the neighborhood. So if this is approved, the board can require a signal. The developer, owner, applicant has agreed to pay for that up to $400,000. And what I would like to do is require it. And then once this, if this gets approved, if this is developed completely and the Skanel property behind there is completed and operational, I'd like to do another traffic signal, but include Chastain Meadows down to Big Shanny because those trucks, whatever that Skanel property is going to be, is going to be utilizing Chastain Meadows up to Chastain Road. So I, because that was not included in this current traffic signal study, correct?
It was included, yes. They did account for those developments on the south end of Chastain Meadows Parkway.
All the way to Big Shanny?
Yes.
Okay, because I thought you said it didn't.
They did include, let me mention the comments. So they include Edison Chastain Meadows Phase 2 and Chastain Logistics Crossing. So those two developments, whatever trip generation they were projecting, they were included in this study.
Okay, well, I'd still like to do another traffic signal study once everything is complete and operational to see the impact and if the signal eventually is warranted. But I still want to go ahead and require it now.
Okay, so it is the prerogative of the board to overrule our recommendations. That is your prerogative, and you can do that. We do not support the installation of the signal without being warranted because we rule, we operate upon national standards. And these are from the ASHTO national standards that we have to meet warrants in order to install a signal for liability, for safety, and for a variety of reasons. So that's why we made the recommendation to install the signal once it's warranted. But I do agree with you that once all of the development is up and running and it's open to the public, we can study it again. And you could request that the developer do that before they leave, right, as a condition, that they study it again within a certain period of time so to see if it warrants at that time. Right now, the study is based on projections of traffic that we use based on standards. But maybe the conditions will change so much that they will warrant at that time. And we do agree with you that the minor, what we call the minor intersection and the minor leg of the intersection, which is the community that is asking for the signal, we agree that they are experiencing delays, yes. But when you install a signal, we look at the overall operation of the intersection. So then they give priority to the main road. So that's why it doesn't warrant, yes, we agree that they are experiencing delays, and they will continue to experience delays. So we understand your point of view, but...
Okay, and then the traffic study. Do you want to address the levels of service or any changes or impact there?
No, I think, I don't know what, ask me a question in particular. I don't know what you're looking for. The level of service, so all of the intersection is overall is acting correctly based on the projections except for the southbound and northbound leg, which is the community that exists today and the future community. But that is not unusual of signal intersection or unsignalized intersections. We expect delays that the person waiting on the minor road experiences delays, so.
Okay, and on these revised comments, number six. It says Cobb County DOT Airport Manager may require additional information from the developer as part of plan review.
Does only, it does only pertain if they are within the boundary of the airport, which I think this is, so it triggers that comment, or if they build anything over 40 feet high.
But that's my question, are there any buildings over 40 feet?
It might not be, but it might be within 4,000 feet of the runway. So they might just have to, we just have to make sure that our airport manager reviews the plan once they come in for plan review, and he gives the okay.
Okay, so, but that could be a...
That can be, that can happen in plan review.
Okay, but do we know if it's 4,000 feet within the runway to the airport?
I will say yes because the comment was made. Usually, we have a boundary that we, if we see that the project's within the boundary of the 4,000 feet, then we make the comment. Without looking it up in GIS, I will say yes. So that's just a checkbox that we will have to make sure that happens during plan review.
Okay, and I'm not aware of any buildings that are 40 feet high in height. But would this be considered in the flight zone or APZ?
Right, and that's what I'm saying, yes, so you're remembering correctly.
Okay, well, we need to know that before plan review.
Okay, let me see if I can pull it up.
And I just noticed that when I got these revised comments, so I...
That's not a new comment, it's been there. So I suspect that it's because it is within the boundaries of the 4,000. Can you look it up? I don't know if you're able to look it up with this. Do you have the installation, mine is not coming up? Maybe it comes up. All right, so no, it's not. Yeah, so it's not, it's not within the 4,000, it's coming up now, I think.
Okay, so it's not in the flight path or APZ?
Correct.
Okay, and then I can verify with the applicant about any height over 40 feet?
So that comment probably was made because of the retail previous and if they were doing multiple stories, and it doesn't pertain now that is residential.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's it.
Do you want to talk about the access, the D cell lanes, right in, right out, where they're going?
I think they have met all of our requirements. They are installing right-turn lanes on, the right-turn lane on Chastain Road, and there's already in Chastain Meadows Parkway, the second driveway. So they are adhering to that. I think they have complied with all of our comments that pertain to the residential development.
Okay. Okay, does anybody else have questions? Did we lose Jerica?
Thank you.
Andrew, it's your turn.
And just a comment, though, the development that's off of Veterans Memorial, where we recently approved the traffic signal, that was similarly situated where we knew that there was a desire for residents to have it, it didn't meet warrants. But over time, it did meet that, and now we're getting them installed, you know, soon. So, we appreciate the process, and it, it does work. When the need arises, that meets the warrant level.
Good morning, Andrew.
Hey, good morning, Andrew Heath, Cobb Stormwater Management.
Okay, we had a little bit of confusion originally on the regional detention facility. So I have for the record, I want to submit your revised comments from November 1st of 2023. And you have, you have that. So, that will replace number 26 in Mr. Moore's STIP letter. Let me make sure that's, yeah, so. And I'll submit these to the clerk for the record.
Okay.
So can you tell us, with your revised comments, where they've got Stormwater Management ponds on, at the very right-hand corner and up right under the townhomes to the left of the site plan? If that's what is required or what is sufficient, or where would that go?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think at this point, the way I look at the site plan is those two areas that are labeled Stormwater Management are sort of placeholders, you might say. I don't think that really the, and typically the zoning process, maybe that's not done yet to, to really know if that size is adequate yet or not. Or if those just represent maybe above-ground areas, and there could be other areas maybe on-site where they're proposing to do something underground for the rest remaining portions of the site. So I don't know with specificity if those two areas that are shown are going to be adequate for that. If they were not, though, they would have to find somewhere else on-site to provide, you know, whatever remaining stormwater benefit is necessary to control, you know, their site.
And that would be determined in plan review?
The way it is right now, yes.
Okay. Okay, so. I, I mainly wanted to clarify too, though, that this is not part of the waiver for the regional detention. So that will be submitted, and then in plan review, whatever is required. And that will be decided in plan review. But are you recommending underground detention?
Not necessarily recommending it. I'm just meaning if those two areas shown on the site plan, if those represent like a traditional above-ground detention facility, that if they're not adequate, and they don't have any other surface area, then they, they could resort to underground detention if they need to. So I'm not necessarily recommending it or recommending against it. It would just kind of be up to them, you know, to see how they wanted to, you know, do it on their side, so.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to submit these for the record. Anything else, Andrew?
That's all for me now, thank you, though.
Thank you.
I have a question, Andrew, I have a question for you. For lots 179 through 182, are those encroaching in the stream buffer?
It looks like, I think those lots are the ones that are along that street that's kind of the one that's sloping, sort of looks like on the site plan to the side. And the rear of those lots is shown to be extending into what would be most of the lots. I think it's the 75-foot impervious area buffer. So that 75-foot impervious area buffer, it can be cleared of vegetation, it can be graded, but it can't be built in for impervious area. So you couldn't have the home or patios and decks and things like that. I had made a recommendation in my comments to, that I recommended that they try to keep the lots outside the buffers. But there isn't really anything that says you can't have a portion of the lot within the buffer. They just, they would just be controlled by what the buffer allows them to do. And so for a lot of those lots, what was inside the buffer was, a portion of the lot was inside the impervious area buffer. So especially for those lots, they, like I say, they would be able to grade and clear the trees in those lots, but they just wouldn't be able to build a house, or patios, or anything else outside the house, behind the house, that's, that's in impervious area, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other comments or questions? Thank you.
And this question may be for John. I keep hearing 296 was recommended by staff. Is that when there were warehouses included, or where's? I couldn't find that number. As a staff recommendation from which, which application this went through?
Yeah, I'm not sure where the 296 came from, because it's the most recent staff recommendation from June.
I think it, it's, it's not necessarily a staff recommendation, I think it's a variance number. No, that's 309, no, that's not 296.
I, I know they had. I think 351 at one time.
That's correct.
And then 343, and even 336, which is one I'm leaning towards, but I, I'm not sure where the 296, but I've, I've heard it.
Maybe it's the cap.
I read it, I thought I saw it, and I'm scrolling through. Back to last year?
2023, yeah.
You said 296, Commissioner? That's with. Okay. So that's with deleting that to RA6 from RM8? Uh, that, okay.
The reference is from 2023, and it's in the staff analysis.
Right.
Yeah, it shows there's an increase of 296 units, but that's not what they could actually.
Not a recommendation.
But that was RM8 going to RA6?
That was RM8, RA4, and RA5.
Okay. Yeah, because this, this application, I think, is the sixth or seventh for this parcel. And, and the last, I don't know, since I've been here. And that's what I'm, I couldn't find that, but thank you. But that's not saying they recommend a total of 296?
It's just an increase of 296 over what they, what's currently zoned.
Okay. Mr. Moore, can you come back up? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
It is still morning. Okay, we, too many meetings to count at this point.
Yes.
But I know that we have had several community meetings. One is, most recent is last Thursday. Wednesday or Thursday, I'm losing track. And I know that you've been asked to do different things as far as zoning categories. When this started out with a, as a PVC and O, and warehouses, we, I think, planning commissioned back in February, sent it to, to us with two options for recommendations. PVC, all PVC, or, I forget what the other one was, but we chose PVC. And then from that, it got to the recommendation of RA6, because we didn't want the warehouses. And now we have an RA6 plan, and yes, it does have variances. But I'm going to go through your STIP letter to see if you are agreeable to making these changes. Really just to let you know that we're making these changes.
Okay.
Okay, so your STIP letter dated August 14. So number one and two will change as far as, as far as, you know, the, the 93 detached single homes, 70 and 180, and 61 townhomes reloaded. So my first stipulation would be a maximum of 336 lot units. And within that, or maybe further down, but also, all the lots have to have a minimum of 5,000 square feet, no 4,000. So that would be in number, STIP numbers one and two. So those, however many you're reducing, you're, you're going to have to reflect that.
Correct.
And also the single-family detached are along the front of Chastain. I know you have agreed to that, but I want to stipulate that to make sure it's done. That, that to, to me and the neighbors, we had been requesting that from the very beginning, because, you know, when you're driving up to this or down Chastain, you want it to look like a neighborhood and surrounding subdivisions, not townhomes. So. Yeah, I know you're agreeable to that. If you go down to number seven. I know you have agreed to prohibit corporate investors or institutional ownership shall be prohibited, and I'm striking except for secured lenders. We don't want any exceptions to corporate or institutional companies to buy out and rent out. And you do still have the 10% cap on the for sale, everything for sale.
Yes. I've been looking forward to this part of the discussion, because this is novel for us, but it's, you know, timely because of all of the concerns in the metro area with corporations coming and buying a lot, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know who would be able to buy a house today without a secured lender, somebody loaning them the money to be able to purchase it. I think that's what secured lender means, is, otherwise it's all cash purchases, so.
If I could.
Maybe Mr. Moore has a different perspective on that.
If, if you don't mind me addressing that, I can do so very concisely, Commissioner. And I appreciate, I don't want any exceptions there either. The exception is because when you call them out as prohibiting corporate investors or institutional ownership, is that could, that could be interpreted to mean your mortgage company, okay? And so for, I would think, the overwhelming majority, if not all of the homes, would be bought with people that would have a mortgage as part of buying a home. That's the secured lender. In the event, you know, in the unfortunate event that there has to be a foreclosure of a home, then the secured lender would, sometimes will end up, that mortgage company could be end, end up owning the home for a brief period of time before it sells it. And without that exception, then it could be read where these mortgage companies would not be able to provide mortgages, if they're prohibited, from exercising their remedy. So if we want to say except for secured lenders defined as mortgage companies, then that's fine. I'm just trying to protect it so that homes can have mortgages, otherwise the lenders wouldn't do it for that reason. But the idea here is to prohibit the corporate investment, institutional investment companies that are coming in, and they buy homes in quantities and subdivisions, and then own them and rent them. And the idea is we can put that into the covenants and use that, just like we use with the 10% rental limitation, something that the community requested that we do, and that we wanted to do here in an attempt to combat that. My experience with it is that when you have those types of corporate or institutional companies that are looking to do that, they're looking for the least barrier to entry to buy. And if there's barriers that are there, like prohibitions in the covenants that are referenced in zoning conditions, that becomes a barrier for them. So there's other places they'll go to do it, if, where those barriers don't exist. And this particular community, given its size, is that we thought that was important, and so did the community. But I have to have some exception for the mortgage companies, or else they won't lend for, for the folks to buy the homes. And that's, that's where that exception is, it's not to allow for a backdoor. It allows for the mortgage company. So if we want to say except for mortgage lenders, I, I'm fine. I, I just use the real estate term of secured lender, but. But secured or mortgage.
But I think that would apply to anyone buying a house. But we want to make sure that a corporate investor or institutional ownership for the purpose of renting out, even though they're restricted to 10%, we don't want any corporate or, or investors to purchase any homes to rent out.
Agreed.
So, the way it reads, it sounds like it's just for the, the corporate investors and institutional ownership, that the secured lenders, you know, or just for that category. But legally, what can, how can we just stop it there that they're prohibited? And then the mortgage companies can be for the overall sale? I, I don't know, legal, how do we word that?
I, I think, I think the wording protects what you want it to. Mr. Moore has offered some additional language that would be able to have for the, I mean, the person wants to take out even a second on their house, they have to be able to secure it with the collateral of their home, and that security needs to be protected.
There's language, that Commissioner Burrell, that you used, that says for the purpose of renting, that could potentially be added
That's fine.
to clarify what type of secured lending would be on the site.
That would certainly be.
I'm looking for the number or letter of the stipulation that.
Number seven. Kevin, I think part of the confusion is that the paragraph starts out with a maximum of rental units, and it goes on to describe that the, the corporate investors and institu- institutional ownership is prohibited from leasing. But then it goes on further to say that secured lenders can lease because they are the exception. And I think that's where the confusion is coming from. That's only provided I'm not confusing you even more.
Let, let, let me clarify.
But, but does that make sense? Because the essence of that paragraph talks about rental units. And it gives, you know, it states that the institutional ownership and corporate investors cannot lease. However, a secured lender can, and I think that. However, a secured lender can, and I think that's where the issue is.
Let me distinguish, because there's two things that are happening here, and that just, so there's, there is a 10% rental limitation, period, period. What this goes on to state, though, is that the corporate investor or institutional ownership is prohibited, period. Not they're prohibited from leasing. They're prohibited from ownership within this community, because that thereby, they would be, the idea is if you just have a 10% rental cap, theoretically, corporate institutional companies that wanna come in and rent only, what they do is they come in and buy up to 10%. And that's what we don't wanna have happen in this case, and which is understandable. So the second part of that stipulation is addressed at prohibiting their ownership of homes. And that's why the exception for the secured lender, it's not that they're accepted from the leasing restriction, they're accepted from the ownership in the event, you know, unfortunate event that there has to be a foreclosure. So those mortgage companies have to be able to own the home, and then they would resell it under that. But then they wouldn't be able to sell it to the type of corporate ownership and institutional ownership that's designed for rental. And if we wanna put that this addition agrees that corporate investors or institutional ownership designed or intention, or intended for the purposes of rental is prohibited, and then end it, we could, that to me may address the concern with that change in the language, and that way it doesn't have to have an exception.
As long as it's clear. As long as it's clear to you and the Commissioner, and to somebody else that will pick up this and read it.
Right, that's how I'm reading it, as the somebody else. And as long as it says it's for the intended or for the purpose of lease or rental is prohibited, then I don't have to have the exception. And that would remove the exception, but then classify that type of ownership.
Okay, so, and Bill, let us, let me know if this is doing what we think it's doing. So you, it would say, in addition, applicant agrees that corporate investors or institutional ownership for purposes of rental?
Shall be prohibited.
Shall be prohibited, period?
Period, and then we can take out, we can delete, except for secured lenders.
Okay, I think that's, did that cover it?
I think, I think he was actually offering it more than that before the change, if he left the secured rentals in there. But I mean, that, that would cover it, though.
Well, I think it's clear, because that's what we're trying to prevent is, you know, a corporation or institutional company coming in and buying up the 10% and then renting them out. But, I mean, they wouldn't be buying them if they're, unless they're for rent. Except, I don't know.
We would be comfortable with that prohibition. Again, we're trying to create the barrier to entry for them, and that would do that for us.
Okay, but, I mean, well. So a corporation could buy a house.
But it couldn't rent it.
They can't rent, but they could own it and.
Presumably, but.
Put an employee in there or whatever.
Potentially.
But not lease.
Right. But I, I think that would be a large exception.
But you are striking except for a secured lender.
Correct.
And it's still the 10%.
10% applies regardless.
If you strike the secured lender, just that additional language that you shared would be helpful so that we don't prohibit commercial lenders assisting with mortgages.
Okay, so leave the for purposes of rental, you're saying?
Yes, the comments that you said would seem to be spot on before.
Well, I just had, I just had the except for secured lenders removed. But that's what we're trying to prevent is, you know, a company coming in and purchasing and then renting them out in a block or any of them.
This would prohibit lease-to-own plans too, right?
It would what?
Prohibit lease-to-own plans.
I don't know.
Because if you're, because that's a part of the package, if it's a rental, that's on a plan to eventually be homeownership.
Well, an individual could do that up to 10%. I mean.
I'm just saying if we're saying prohibited for mortgage companies to participate, like to do any kind of lending for rental purposes. And just a question.
I think we're all in agreement, so that's the good part about what we're trying to address, and the best way to do that. And I think that the 10% rental limitation combined with the prohibition on ownership by corporate, by corporate or institutional investor, which is a pretty well-defined segment for purposes of rental, addresses the issue on an individualized lease to purchase. That, that is still allowed, there's just a limitation on that. And you're not gonna have that many, that's not really how this type of community is gonna happen. But it would allow that opportunity for an individual to do so.
You could say, in addition, applicant agrees that corporate investors or institutional ownership shall be prohibited for the purpose of rental.
That's fine.
For the purpose of rental.
Okay, and strike except for secured lenders. And this, this will be in the covenants?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, number eight. This addresses the alleyways, public, private streets, designated alleys. I'm adding no parking along private alleys. And then, number 13, strike 4,000 and replace with 5,000. All the units have to be a minimum of 5,000 square feet. Excuse me, all the lot sizes have to be a minimum of 5,000 square feet. Number 13 applies to the rear-loaded, single-family detached. So number 14 already has the 5,000 square feet. So, and then number 15, you had for the amenities.
Yes.
You have pool, clubhouse, and/or cabana.
Correct.
I think it needs to be clubhouse. And you can add a cabana, but it's not either or. It needs to be a clubhouse. And you also have a dog pa, you have green, green space park, pocket park areas, walking paths. But you also have a dog park on the site plan.
Yes.
So we need to add that to identify that. And then on 19, on 19, where the existing trees are along the 575 ramp border, the existing trees that are in the state right-of-way are to remain. And then you're gonna add another landscape plan to fill in with what's there, but they have to remain.
That's correct.
And from our, our calculations yesterday with Mr. Peterson and myself, it looked like the north part of that was about 10 to 15 feet, and the south section, further down, looked to be about 60 feet for what's in the right-of-way for additional buffer.
Right.
But they, those have to remain.
Agreed.
And let's see, number 20. This is the southern boundary that adjoins, backs up to the Scannell property. And let's see, you have a 25-foot natural and landscape buffer, and then a 15-foot easement area. So that's, that would be 40 total?
Yes.
And then, and then, Scannell has a 50-foot buffer or a 40?
They have a minimum 30-foot buffer under the OS category to which that property has been zoned since the 70s. But yes, it's a minimum 30-foot landscape buffer that is on the, on that development.
It's 30 feet?
Yes.
So 40 and 30, that would be closer to the 100-foot that's being requested. But is there any way you can increase any of those buffers by five feet or?
We maximized them as much as the plan can absorb, so that we can have, you know, maximum flexib, maximum ability to preserve trees, preserve existing trees, plant berm with plantings on top of the berms, so that that can be accomplished through what we've done with that. So that's, I mean, we've, we really did maximize it to that greatest extent possible so that, to achieve that.
Okay, well, we, we do need to add in the trees in the right-of-way of 575, and then also mention that, and inspections is gonna need to make sure that's a 30-foot buffer on the Scannell side, because I know they've cleared a lot, everything. And then number 22. Applicant agrees existing street trees located along Chastain Meadows Parkway shall not be disturbed, except for the areas requiring disturbance for construction of the entrance and the decel lane. So there's two, is that for both areas or just the one driveway at the, at the lower end?
It's just for the one driveway at the lower end that.
Because the other one's already existing.
The other one exists, correct.
Okay, and are you gonna do anything to enhance that? Or just keep the remaining trees, but any other landscape?
There will be additional landscaping in front of the homes there, as well as additional entryway landscaping and that type of thing. That will be part of the overall landscape plan. But we wanted to ensure that that area has existing, really full-grown street trees that are along Chastain Meadows. One of the requests from the community is that we preserve those, and we are able to preserve those along Chastain Meadows. So that's what that, that is.
Yeah, that's important, to keep those.
Yes, it is, we agree.
Okay, and then number 26, we're striking in its entirety. And I've submitted Andrew's recommendation from November 1st with regard to the Chastain Meadows detention facility, regional detention facility. And that, that will be determined in plan review as far as the detention pods or underground detention? Do you plan to do underground detention?
Not at this time. The, the plan, as far as the preliminary engineering has gone, it does incorporate detention for this project, as, as Andrew pointed out.
Okay, but that will be determined in plan review?
It would be.
Okay, number 29. This is the traffic signal. When you say in the event a traffic signal is approved, this board can approve it whether warranted or not.
Yes.
Well, you're not saying it if warranted.
No, that's, that's in very intentional language. If the traffic signal is approved, that could be approved down the road, or it could be approved by this board right now. And that's, that's why I wanted to, I intentionally stated it that way. And, you know, in deference in respect to DOT's comments, but also in deference in respect to the ability of this board to approve a signal like Madam Chair referenced on Veterans Memorial. There's, this has been done before, and that goes back in history at times when this board believed it was necessary and critical component, then you did. And we wanna, we wanted to provide an avenue for that to occur.
Okay, well, I have some different language that I'm gonna request here. Applicant agrees to pay for traffic signal at the intersection of this community entrance and Chastain Road, which aligns with the Chastain Lake subdivision in an amount not to exceed 400,000, as determined by DOT, and paid into escrow prior to the issuance of an LDP. John, can we do that? Or Leah?
Normally, when there's a requirement for a traffic signal, DOT will require a development agreement prior to issuance of a land assistance permit.
Okay, so would y'all still do a developmental agreement without it being warranted? Come on.
The board would have to direct DOT to do it in that, in that circumstance?
So this is a first for me, and I, I think the DOT will follow the rule of the board, the direction of the board in this case.
Okay.
Just be mindful that DOT is mindful of potential liability for us not meeting the standards that they have.
And to clarify, you, we had proposed installing the signal.
I know.
And your proposal would be to escrow a cost of this, escrow it with DOT, which would make it DOT's responsibility to install it. So we were proposing, I would, I would think you would want us to do it since, as part of our project, and be responsible. since, as part of our project and be responsible for it. But...
Oh, it does say including installation in there.
Right.
Oh, I thought, okay, I see now. I didn't realize that.
I mean, obviously, the plans and how it comes about has, is controlled and permitted and approved by DOT from that standpoint.
Okay, so why don't we just do, um, well, you still, I still have to... So I'm just not gonna go into escrow. They're just gonna cover it with their contractor. Okay, but they have to work with DOT as to...
Correct.
Okay, so for your number twenty-nine, in the event a traffic signal is approved, I'm gonna put by the BOC. For the intersection of community entrance and Chastain Road aligned with the entrance to Chastain Lake subdivision, applicant agrees to be responsible for the cost of such signal, including installation, up to a maximum of four hundred thousand so long as the signal approval occurs within five years of final rezoning approval. We don't really need that.
Yeah, if you're approving it today, then that part doesn't really apply, then it's occurring.
But I don't, I have to give you direction of when it's gonna be done.
Yeah, the...
I mean, I, I don't want it to be done five years from now.
No, you can, that was per the DOT's recommendation in case it approval occurred later. If, if the board's direction today is it's an approved signal today, then that would, this would need to just simply say that the applicant agrees to install a signal at this, um, intersection for a max, up to a maximum of four hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, you don't have to make it conditional upon our approval.
Right.
We would just make that a part of the zoning.
Okay, cause I'm, but I am adding by the BOC. Cause if it's not warranted and we have approval, then it goes in.
When you say approval by the BOC, you're inferring that we're improving it when we approve the zoning though?
At the zoning.
Okay.
Okay, number thirty. I'm sorry, y'all, this is taking so long, but we have to get this cleared up. Let's see, number thirty. Proposed townhomes shall have a minimum of eighteen hundred square feet heated, cooled space. And with a two-car garage required for all units. And that will be determined in plan review too as far as the width and, um... Cause I know there's a lot of back and forth with two-car garages, but only one and a half can fit. So, um, in plan review, they will determine the met, the size.
Okay.
What if that impacts the size of the townhome with? What, what would be the controlling width, the garage or what's indicated to be the townhome with?
Well, what I'm thinking is it would change the number if they had to make them wider. They may lose a lot or something, I don't know.
Well, and to answer your question, Madam Chair, is they have to meet all these conditions. So they have to be minimum eighteen hundred square feet. They all have to have a two-car garage, whether they're eighteen or twenty foot for wide, uh, wide townhomes, they have to meet those two minimum requirements of, of house size and number of garage spaces.
Is there a standard that determines what the garage size width is for two cars? Because the pictures that we saw showed that two cars could not fit into those garages for the cars that were parked there.
Let me ask the applicant, do you have an elevation of the sixteen-foot wide unit?
The eighteen-foot homes, yes, I mean, the, the garage width is sixteen feet for those specific units, which is a two-car garage for those types of units, which is what Ashton Homes has built and has two cars in it, in it and in their products. So, um, that's what that is. To give you some perspective, the average width of a car is five point eight feet.
Okay. This could be something we can dispute even outside of this hearing. I know in my initial single-family home here, my husband and I could not both park in our garage at the same time. We just had to choose. I won, but...
Right, but it's a very specific product and it, it appeals to a, a narrower group of people that want to live in, in a rear-entry townhome. So it, it, it fits within those parameters. And we, and we're fine, we're calling it a two-car garage because it is from our standpoint. So we're, we're agreeable if it's to, to emphasize two-car garages required for all units and...
Yeah.
That...
We just don't know what that is.
You may wanna specify it. I don't think they're gonna be losing any townhomes for that based on the way that's worded. If there is gonna, if that's gonna be in dispute, what a two-car garage is. Trying to see what the standard.
So where do we at? What?
I don't know, I'm looking, I'm looking up some preferences right now.
So they would still have to be eighteen hundred square feet?
Yes, I'm looking at a standard, two-car garage is typically twenty to twenty-four feet wide, is what I'm reading here. I'm seeing that twenty by twenty feet, twenty-two by twenty-two, twenty-four by twenty-four, twenty-eight by twenty-eight.
And some, there's, there were some that were eighteen.
All of these websites that I'm looking at that are just coming up on a, just a very brief search, none of them have a size below twenty feet.
And with the image that was shown earlier, that was eighteen feet where both cars were on the park, the driveway.
That was sixteen.
Sixteen.
All right, I took, my first one I'm seeing, it took me a number of, a number of, um, scrolls down, but I do see one eighteen foot. But most of them are referring to...
The picture that the opposition showed was sixteen feet.
That was sixteen.
Where the cars didn't...
Okay.
They were on the driveway but not in, okay.
So that's, I would encourage you to stipulate that the average garage size for two, then I see eighteen. But even that's the size of the townhome, so the garage is typically not as wide as the home. And there's a good...
So they end up being sixteen.
Endant.
Well, could, do we add a minimum? Two-car garage minimum?
I'm supplying you with information. You can use it however you choose. I do not wanna be responsible for that. But I'm just saying what, what can happen is a similar scenario to what the opposition was indicating where both cars cannot fit in the size that was, um, shown on, on the screen.
So Kevin, um, the townhomes, are they currently at sixteen feet? In your proposal, the elevations, I mean, the garage?
The width of the, not all townhomes, so it's just the, the rear-entry townhomes that are located there off of Chastain Meadows, those have a sixteen-foot wide garage. And as I said, the average width of a car is five point eight feet. So that's less than twelve feet for the, to put two cars in there. A couple of feet on either side and it, that's why you call it that. Now, that's the average width and we understand that. But if I'm driving a family suburban, I'm not buying an eight, I'm not buying a rear-entry townhome. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a product designed for a type of buyer that that's gonna appeal to, which typically is gonna have a much smaller car than that.
Interesting.
It also differentiates between the sixteen-foot door versus the twenty-foot garage. So the door versus the garage width, the, the garage door versus the garage width are also different. So I don't know if that's a delineation, cause sixteen feet is a norm for the garage door I'm seeing. But... Just throwing that in.
But the car still has to get in the door.
Has to get in and you have to open the door.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. I was just saying where we're seeing sixteen, where I'm seeing sixteen feet is more around the dimensions of the door, not the garage. And that's the differentiation I'm trying to, yeah.
Okay, I receive that.
Good point.
Um, let's see. John, what do you recommend here? I mean, you get, I don't know.
That, you know, to me, the, the, the condition is clear, Commissioner Burrow. Townhomes have to be a minimum eighteen hundred square feet with a two-car garage. And as all the district commissioners know, you know, the zoning staff brings all y'all elevations from time to time. And we go through it to make sure it meets the materials, the, the size and number of garages. So if it doesn't meet it, then it'd be kicked back and it'd be forced to bring in one that meets the zoning conditions.
Okay, but what would, what would be decided in plan review when they're looking at these elevations and man, and measurements for a garage, two-car garage? What is gonna be the standard in plan review for them to require for a two-car garage? Sixteen feet, eighteen feet, twenty-four feet?
Well, and, and that's up to the applicant. You know, we're gonna be looking for the minimum, uh, width of the unit, which is eighteen feet. And then there's some bigger ones mixed in there also.
Right.
And, you know, when they come in for plan review, all those units are gonna be shown on the plans. And, you know, it, it would be very hard for me to believe that Ashton Woods didn't propose this condition knowing that they, that they did not have that product in stock or they could build it. That's, that'd be very surprising to me.
Can always have the final plan be reviewed by the district commissioner.
Well, it is.
I know, I'm just saying have that be like a part of one of the things you look at.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, two-car garage, I'm adding two-car garage required for all units. And then in, e- everything has to be approved with review by the neighbors, neighborhood HOAs.
Oh, really?
Review, yeah, all the elevations, final site plan, landscape plan, all that goes back to them for, I always do that.
Okay.
Goes back to Mills Ferry Civic, Brookhaven, surrounding neighbors for review before I sign on them.
Correct.
They know, I always do that. Um, okay. So has this all been in the form of a motion?
So moved as you discuss.
This, Commissioner, if I could...
I still have some more.
As we've gone through those, there's, there's one item I would like to clarify or add for your consideration in the, in terms of the stipulations that was inadvertently omitted. And that is the minimum house size for the, minimum house size, meaning minimum house size of, of heated and cooled square footage for the rear-loaded detached homes. Those are the ones that are along the frontage that you called out that are on our plan. We've got the townhomes and the single-family detached homes that are the ones on the, the larger lots. But the ones that are rear-loaded, we need to include a minimum house size of eighteen hundred and fifty square feet. They range from eighteen fifty to twenty-two, twenty-three hundred square feet. But that's, I need to make sure that's in there because that's the, that's, it's a very specific home product that Ashton, um, Homes has. It's a rear-loaded detached home, and so I just wanna make sure that that's broken out for that purpose. If we could, if you would consider that as part of...
Number thirty-two says the proposed single-family detached shall have a minimum of twenty-five hundred square feet of heated, cooled space.
Those are the, the homes on the...
Front?
The lots that are in, on the southern portion of this property. But the ones that are along the frontage are rear-loaded homes that are detached. And they're, it's just a different product for that reason. It's a rear-loaded home. It's, and that minimum square footage is different than those. I wanna, I just, it's inadvertently omitted from this letter, so it was, and I wanted to just make sure because it, it, it needs to be in there if, if, if you would consider that addition.
Okay, so, um, number thirty-two, are the proposed single-family detached homes front-loading?
Yes.
Okay, front-loading. Shall have a minimum of twenty-five hundred square feet of heated and cooled space with a two-car garage. And then we're adding number thirty-five, I guess?
Yes, if that would be acceptable.
Thirty-two.
The, the rear-loaded, single-family detached homes would have a minimum of eighteen hundred and fifty square feet of heated and cooled space with a two-car garage.
Yeah, I'll just put that under thirty-two.
Thank, thank you for that.
And that's single-family detached?
Yes, rear-loaded, single-family detached.
And those are the ones along Chastain?
Right, that's, they're primarily along Chastain and then there's a, a smaller section of them just off of, of Chastain Meadows behind the townhomes to transition from townhomes to single-family detached, rear-loaded to the single, larger, uh, detached homes.
You go ahead. You had a question?
I just wanted to ask if you had a copy of the elevations attached to your presentation.
We did not include the copies of the, of the elevations. Those are gonna, understand, would be subject to final approval by the district commissioner as well as review by the community. We've had a lot of discussions about, about all of the different products and we feel very good about what we would put, uh, in terms of elevation product here with a good deal of brick and, you know, features that we've discussed with them. So it's not included as part of the stipulations as they're, uh, this is a project that they're gonna need to design the elevations for this location. And they've done that in other, they have a mixed residential product, um, project and community that is off of, um, I believe it's Cumberland Parkway, um, that Ashton has done and done very well. And it's, it's a type of product in, in all of that. So that's why we left it that way. We feel very confident with that. We've heard from the community, we know what they wanna see here and what, um, what we can do.
Thirty-three.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
And it describes that.
No, I just thought maybe with this presentation for those that are joining online.
They have to come back. But you did have some other, you did have some drawings of other Ashton Woods.
That's correct. We had some drawings, but we didn't wanna put them because it's not rep... While the quality is representative, there was a look and feel that was being, wanted to be desired here. And so we wanna develop that and bring that, um, through with additional community input in the future as well as final district commissioner approval.
Okay, and then, um... Yeah, well, all this is my, my motion, part of my motion. Okay, anything else?
And for the record, the, all of those changes that were discussed in this letter with the addition are agreeable to the applicant.
I have nothing else to add to your motion. I just, um, no, from reading all the comments and listening, there's been a lot of commentary regarding the Scannell or Scannell property, which has two industrial buildings. That has not come before zoning in our lifetime here on the board. I believe that was zoned several decades ago.
Back in the eighties.
Back in the eighties. And when a property is already zoned for a certain use, they do not come before this board for consideration. They have the abil- ability to go in and build according to that zoning. And the zoning at the time was, was it OS?
It was zoning in the eighties. It was zone two OS.
Yes, and which does include here, I was just looking at the standard's distribution-type buildings.
It, it does allow for wholesale trade and, and distribution facilities.
When it was gonna be Amazon, it, the parking came in. But now the parking is on this Z fifteen.
Okay, yes, so, yeah, I may know.
Um, cause that one parcel didn't match the OS.
Okay.
Zoning. Um, this, this application was, you can sit down, Kevin.
Right.
This, uh, application came before us first and, um, well, not us, but planning commission. This, uh, application came before us first and, um, well, not us, but planning commission. It, it was submitted in May of twenty-twenty-three. And as I mentioned before, I think this is the sixth or seventh application for this fifty-seven point two-eight acres. Um, we have opposed or denied previous applications, and even this has been revised from its original plan of PVC with warehouses from when it was first, um, before us. We have had several meetings with surrounding neighbors, Bells Ferry Civic, Brookhaven, attorneys, applicants. This, this, the land use for this total area is in a CAC. But from the mixed-use PVC warehouses, everything that has been suggested that could potentially go here, we requested the applicant based on the planning commission recommendation back in February to look at all PVC and no warehouses. And since then and after several meetings and discussions, we recommended RA six. Because after the PVC application, um, this came in with an RM eight, RA four, and RA five. So, I guess to kinda make it all one category, we went with, we suggested RA six. And we have looked at everything, taken into consideration the density, the buffers, the traffic, the stormwater, amenities, green space, landscaping, site plan. And a, a lot of recommendations and suggestions from the community, revisions and concessions on both sides. So, um, with all that, I'm ready to make a motion. And as was mentioned, this has always been in District Three, but with the state map, it would be back in District Two. Um, or it would go to be in District Two, so. Um, I make a motion to delete Z fifteen of twenty-twenty-three to RA six subject to the STIP letter dated eight fourteen twenty-four from Mr. Kevin Moore with the following revisions. Maximum number of three hundred and thirty-six units, minimum five thousand square foot lots. Um, number seven of his STIP letter. We're adding, in the third sentence, we're, we're striking except for secured lenders and adding, after shall be prohibited, we're adding for purposes of rental to that. And I have all this written out for the clerk if you need help. Um, number eight, no parking along private alleys. Number thirteen, strike four thousand square feet and replace with five thousand square feet minimum. Number fifteen. Um, we're striking and/or cabana after clubhouse and adding dog park. Number nineteen. We're adding the existing trees in the state right-of-way along five seventy-five to remain. And number twenty. Um, where the total buffer for this property with the, um, the buffer and the easement is forty feet. And just making a note that the Scannell property has a thirty-foot buffer where they back up to this property. Uh, number twenty-two. Um, we're keeping the existing trees along Chastain except where the, uh, decelerating entrance are and adding additional landscaping, which will come back for final approval. Number twenty-six, we are striking in its entirety and replacing with, uh, Andrew Heath's revised stormwater comments dated eleven one twenty-three. On number twenty-nine. We are adding, in the event traffic signal is approved by the Board of Commissioners, we're adding by the Board of Commissioners. And we're striking so long the signal approval occurs within five years of final rezoning approval after the four hundred thousand. Number thirty, we are adding two-car garages required for all units. Number thirty-two. The proposed single-family detached homes, we're adding the front-loading shall have a minimum of twenty-five, we're keeping, shall have a minimum of twenty-five hundred square feet heated-cooled space with a two-car garage. And we're adding rear-loaded, single-family detached, um, homes shall have a minimum of eighteen hundred square feet with two-car garages. And then, um, DOT revised comments dated eight nineteen twenty-four, which have been submitted to the clerk. And final site plan and landscape plans to be approved by District Commissioner and County Arborist with review by Bells Ferry Civic and Brookhaven of East Cobb HOAs. And all staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. And what did I leave out?
Okay, so I'll include your motion?
Okay, I'll second, is there any additional discussion? All right, we'll call the question. The motion carries for zero with Commissioner Gambro being absent. We'll go ahead and take a break until eleven-thirty. Thank you.
Welcome back to our zoning hearing this August 20th, 2024. We just wrapped up Z15, I believe, on our held and continued cases. And John, does that take us now to our regular cases?
Yes, it does.
All righty.
Okay, first case for regular cases is rezoned case Z38. Murray D. Gray III requested rezoning from R80 to R40 for second family residence in land lot 1260 of the 16th District. Property is located on the east side of Atlanta Country Club Drive and on the south side of Paper Mill Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z38? The director says no one opposed.
I've got 10 minutes, but if it's okay with the board, I would rather not take all my 10 minutes. Is that okay?
If that's okay with you and the applicant.
Okay. For the record, my name is Parks Hough with Sam Larkin Huff, and I represent the applicant in regards to this. Without opposition here, this really should go pretty quickly. This was originally on the consent agenda. It is R80 lot, one acre, two acre lot, divided into two one acre lots. Adjacent to us is an R20 property. He came in, kind of opposed it because of visual and things like that. The Planning Commission recommended approval with the staff recommendation for approval, and then added an additional 10-foot buffer on the eastern property line. That second number there was actually inaccurate, that they did not add it between the two lots. And in talking with Mr. Peterson and the District Commissioner, we've agreed to condition number one, addition of a 10-foot landscape buffer on the eastern property line for the new lot only. So the existing home that will be on that lot doesn't have that additional buffer because it's there already. So only the new lot would have the 10-foot buffer. And with that, we ask that you approve the case as presented. And that was like a minute and... And if I could keep the nine, eight minutes for another case later on sometime?
Okay.
I can't take it with me!
All right, thank you so much. And seeing no opposition, okay, I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you. Yes, we were anticipating for the opposition to show up today to hear the general issues there. There were definitely some recommendations that came out of Planning Commission, as you so summarized. What I do want to ensure is, because we are kind of changing a little bit of this language on the fly, is, John, that what you heard from Mr. Parks was consistent with what was just sketched.
Yes. So put the 10-foot landscape buffer on the eastern side of the new lot.
Yes. And then for two, bullet point two, I guess I was just trying to understand the complete removal of that, because I wasn't sure if that was reflective of the 10-foot buffer landscape line or next to the gentleman's. It's still the eastern property, though, so one covers all of that.
Yeah, I think the condition that Mr. Huff commented on would be enough as his only condition.
Okay. Okay. The only other additional stipulation I want to add is a final approval to come from the District Commissioner. Agreeable to that?
Agreed with that.
Thank you. Thank you on both counts. And then, because I know this was an expedited version of the hearing, do the other commissioners have questions before I place a motion? Go ahead.
With the R40, it's VLDR, so how many units per acre? Is this a whole acre? What's the acreage of this?
It's one unit per acre.
Okay. And we did have a letter from Mr. Jackson that adjoins this in opposition. So was that worked out with him?
It's not worked out with him. That's why I said we were anticipating him to show, but it's general opposition to the split itself, what the Planning Commission tried to accommodate with a little bit of screening for the front yard piece. And so that's what we were just referring to as that stipulation.
And did you have any calls? Because I had another call from opposition in the Atlanta Country Club, but they didn't. I told them they needed to call you.
I did not receive a call from anyone from opposition. I just received the gentleman's complaints and got a debrief of those issues as well with the Planning Commissioner.
I don't agree with the split of lots either, but...
It is, it is two one-acre lots. The property behind us is owned R30. The property to the east is owned R20. Constitutionally, I don't see any way that the county could deny an R40 lot on Paper Mill Road with those surrounding zonings inconsistent with land use.
I don't think the county is denying. I'm just telling you my comment.
Yeah, because there are no variances on this, and it is still consistent with the future land use plan. And as I said, I think that there was at least some accommodation to the concern by the next-door neighbor who actually has a higher density lot. So, yeah.
Yeah, he is owned R20, and he can be 10 feet off of our property line. When it develops, it will be 10 feet off our property line.
So I think this is probably the best compromise of the split lots that we've, different cases that we've seen. So thank you for agreeing to the different stipulations on that. I will go ahead and move forward with a motion unless there are any other additional questions or points of clarification required.
Just one minor thing is that there were concerns with respect to stormwater. I don't know if that's been addressed.
As a part of stormwater comments. Yeah, it's kind of the normal call-in. I mean, we can certainly bring someone up, though, to address.
I didn't know if you knew of any unique circumstance which may have prompted this comment.
No.
Okay.
Okay. So I would go ahead and motion, motion to approve Z38 with the Planning Commission recommendations with the edit into the notes that are here in the record with number two. So we're striking that one, but making sure that it's clear that we're referring to the new property lot line. And to add, that final approval comes in through the District Commissioner for final evasions.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, is there any additional discussion?
Did I miss something, John? Okay.
Just looking at water and sewer comments, I'm not seeing anything that stands out. All right, I'll call the question. Motion carries 3-1 with Commissioner Burrell in opposition and Commissioner Gamble absent.
Okay, next case is LEP 22. Jose O. Rodriguez requests a temporary land use permit to allow commercial vehicles and equipment to be parked on a residential property in land lot 298 of the 17th District. Property is located on the south side of Cranefield Road and on the west side of Clearvee Drive. Is the applicant present? Let the director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 22? Okay, let the director show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward and be sworn in?
Good morning.
My name is Karina. I'm back with this case. I brought some pictures just to kind of show you where we park the trucks for the business. And I also just got a couple letters from, or references from the neighbors that they had no problem with us using the back of the house to park the vehicles, so... Let me see.
Is there any additional information you'd like to share with us as part of your presentation?
Well, that's the back of the property. That's where we store the vehicles at night, pretty much just the vehicles stay there overnight. We don't have any customers coming in at the property. And, yeah, that's pretty much it. We just park them overnight to get ready for the next morning. Other than that, I don't believe we disturb any customers or any neighbors around us or... And we just wanted to see if you congratulate us a permit at least for 12 months. And, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there anyone here in opposition? Not seeing any opposition, what I'll do is I'll turn things over to the District Commissioner to provide their comments, and if they have any questions for you, they'll call you back up.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first of all, they're, these are commercial vehicles in a neighborhood, R20 lot, which...
Yes, ma'am, you can have a seat while we're discussing.
And it is a result of code enforcement, and we have several violations. Yalisa, would you like to come up and speak to this?
Good morning, Yalisa Fawson, Cobb County Code Enforcement.
Good morning. Can you tell us what you found and what has been done with the violations that you found and citations?
We inspected the property. We received a complaint April 5th of 2024 in regards to operating a business at the property, some outside storage and parking standards. An officer went out and issued a notice of violation for customary home occupation, outside storage, and parking standards on April 5th. At the back of the property, it's a gravel lot, and they have a trailer parked on the gravel with a wood chipper. And then they're also keeping two dump trucks at the property. Along with that, during an inspection recently, we noticed that there was a fence in disrepair. Since then, they've removed the fence, and they are in compliance with the fence being in disrepair. But they still have the violation of the business equipment, the parking standards, and the customary home occupation. Under the customary home occupation, you're allowed to have one business vehicle under 12,500 pounds. Both dump trucks are over the gross limit, which puts the property in violation.
Well, do y'all have any other questions?
I have a question for you, Yalisa.
Just for clarification, with the customary home occupation, you mentioned that is 1,200 pounds. So each of the dump trucks weigh 1,200 pounds?
It's gross with the load. You can't have a vehicle that weighs gross 12,500 pounds or more.
Okay. Thank you. How many complaints have you received, Yalisa? From how many residents?
Outside of this complaint, while we were working this complaint, we received other complaints that went through the Planning Commission.
How many?
Two more that went through the Planning Commission.
Two more in addition to this?
Yes, while this case is still ongoing.
Oh, I see. Thank you, Yalisa. They have the five work vehicles plus their own personal vehicles, I presume, at the lot.
Well, the issue I have is equipment. You said a tree, a wood chipper?
Yes, ma'am.
And the trucks, that's just not conducive in a residential neighborhood.
I'm seeing two dump trucks, one Bobcat, one trailer, one wood chipper, plus two employee vehicles, plus the title holder and the wife live at the location, which could be two additional vehicles.
They're running a business out of a residential area, and I don't want to set a precedent because everybody and their brother will want to do that.
And you can, but there's certain types of businesses. This is, it certainly exceeds the intensity considered for allowable home businesses.
And you said that they're parked on gravel?
Yes, the back parking lot is gravel.
But is that considered hardened surface?
No, you have to add some type of mixture to make it a hardened treated surface, so they're in violation of parking standards.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Richardson.
I don't necessarily have a question for Yalisa, but I do have a, I do have one for the applicant. I'm just not sure if I should wait or maybe I can ask...
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, ma'am. The image that was on the screen a short while ago, or the photo of the two vehicles that were shown, yes. Can you point to us or share with us where the other vehicles and equipment is in relation to these two photos?
It's to the left in the back. There's a trailer in the back over there. And I do have a photo of the trailer back there with the business equipment on it.
And the wood chipper is also stored in that same area?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Well, Yalisa, the fence that was repaired, is that where we see behind this tractor?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
The fence that was in disrepair, is that... The fence that was in disrepair, is that? It looks like a little house.
Yes, it was in the area behind the trailer, there was a privacy fence that was up. And over here shows where it's leaning, and then disrepair, so they removed that portion, they removed the fence back there. In order for them to be in compliance, they would have to repair it or remove it.
Okay, so what is that little house behind the, this fence? Is that their property?
That's next door.
Okay.
Are you talking about to the left?
No, I'm talking, see where that cooler is?
That's next door, that's the carport.
One?
If you can put the other photo up.
Yeah, put the other photo where the clear, the, um, open fence.
The previous photo. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's another property.
Okay, so there's nothing there now, or is that wire fence still there? What, they took down the privacy fence, the wooden?
It's a chain link fence that's there, but the privacy fence has been taken down.
Okay.
Is this fence in any type of code violation, the chain link fence?
No.
Yeah, to the left, it looks like it's falling apart, but I can't tell from the photo if it's falling apart or if there is some type of debris, tree debris on the fence.
The issue is that the neighbors are in violation as well, so when you look at the picture, the house to the left has a customary home occupation issue as well. And that house has some violations as well, so with the way the pictures look, it's hard to see which property that is, has the violation sitting on it, excuse me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And, and there is a violation too for not being on a hardened surface?
Yes ma'am, they're in violation of the parking standards.
Okay. I think. Anybody else have anything for Yalisa? Do you want to call, may I call the applicant back up? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can the applicant come back up, please?
I'm just waiting for the queue.
Sorry.
No, you're good, thank you. The question I have for you, is there any intent, intention to find a commercial space to move this equipment to at some point?
Yes, we were renting a space back in December, but they sold it, so that's the reason why we have them here. Because we haven't find a perfect space where it's close to where we can have the employees pick up and drop off their personal vehicles. And yeah, but we're in the process for looking for one, and the reason why we were asking for the permit, it was just temporary. And I know the vehicles are now parking on a hard surface, where we were intending on pouring concrete if we get the permit approved.
So how long have you been operating here, bringing the trucks back here and all?
About four, five months, six months.
So what would you think, do you have any leads for where you can move to, or?
Not yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
We commend you for starting, presuming this is a business that you started or your family started, and we commend that activity here. We commend you in that entrepreneurial endeavor, but we don't necessarily commend it being here in a residential area where people live.
No.
It's not appropriate for there to be this intense of a use that's business oriented, which would be more for a commercial area, perhaps even an industrial area, than for this to be where people expect to have homes of single family character. So, you know, imagine if every home on this street was conducting activity in this way, it would certainly change the residential character of the street. So permitting this, even though to you it might seem minor, to those who are living around you, it can have a significant impact. And certainly if that was perpetuated in this area, it would not be consistent with what we would expect for a single family home residential area. But we do want your business to succeed, you look like you're doing well, not having one truck, but two and multiple employees. We just hope that there is a place in the county that can accommodate your business activities so that this area here is consistent with an area where people can sleep in and lay their head at night and have quiet enjoyment.
I have one other question. We did receive support from a neighbor, Karina Ramirez. Maybe you or Yalisa know which house is, is theirs? Are they right next door, or behind you, or?
It's behind this tree on Clearview.
Behind, it's behind what now?
It's down this street on Clearview.
Below you?
Yeah, a little bit more down.
1754?
Yeah, right there in the corner.
Oh, 64. And Yalisa, that's not the one that has other violations, is it?
1754 behind them is customary home, 1764 not.
No, you gotta come up, you gotta come up. I'm sorry, I should have asked you this.
My apologies, the house behind them at 1754, that's the property that has customary home occupation issues. I have to look and see if we have a case for 1764, because I don't recall them having any violations.
Okay, but you're saying the neighbor that was in support is at 1764?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're in between both. Yeah, yeah, that would set a precedent for 1754 and everybody else. So, um, I, I was planning on giving 60 days to come into compliance, I think that's what the Planning Commission recommended. So, um, we'll give you 60 days to remove the trucks and the equipment and find a commercial location to park. So with that, I'll make a motion to deny LUP 22 and allow 60 days from today's date to come into compliance.
Second for discussion, just one point, Commissioner, do you think it would be worth listing each of the, each of the vehicles? That are listed? Do you want to list each of the vehicles, or just leave it broad to remove all of the equipment and vehicles from the property?
All, all of the equipment and vehicles that not, are not in compliance.
Okay, okay.
I mean, your personal car is okay, but like, you know, anybody at a house, your personal vehicle or car, but no heavy equipment, no chipper, no trucks, no outdoor storage, all, all the things that, Yalisa, that code enforcement has cited.
We cleared the back already, like, we removed the fence. And yeah, we only have the, those two trucks that were on the picture now and the wood chipper.
Even the employee parking at the site.
Well, if it's more than what's allowed. But will you, you won't have employees parking there if they don't have the equipment, if you've moved to a commercial area. But your personal car, you're allowed if you live there. So, um, I, I'm not sure what y'all are asking.
I'm not asking, I'm just observing.
I just thought maybe you wanted to make clear which, which items should be removed in the 60 days. But if you say all, all items, then I guess that should be sufficient.
All right. And within 60 days from today.
All right, we have a motion, a second, is there any additional discussion? I'll call the question. Motion carries four zero with Commissioner Gambrell being absent.
Okay, next case is LUP 23 Wayne Kaywick requests a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles and adults than the code allows in landlots 20 and 57 of the 20th District. The property is located at the terminus of Westfield Row, east of Parkwood Chase. Is the applicant present? Let's direct sure the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 23? Two? Let's direct sure there's two people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I guess I'm restating my case from the previous time.
Yes, just let us know your name for the record.
Yes, well, my name is Morni Covick, I am here representing my father Wayne Covick, who currently resides at 882 Westfield Row. The reason for us to have asked for this consideration is for medical purposes. While we do understand that we are in violation of the Cobb County Code Enforcement, we've had some very troubling times with health with my father. It started off with my stepmom being very ill, my, who subsequently passed away two and a half years ago due to a chronic illness. In the interim, my father was diagnosed with melanoma, which metastasized within his body. It's now in his brain. And of course, we go through treatments, but there's been a lot financially and medically to go along with his debilitating health over the past several years. Currently, right now, I have my son staying there, and I have my niece Sydney, who also stays there. We have an in-law suite down below, and Rahon currently lives in the in-law suite. And then he was kind of helping my father out. During all of this, Sydney came to move in in January, which then, of course, violated us with the vehicles and then too many people within the house as they are technically, like Sydney is not included as a family member because she's not a direct family member. Nevertheless, we have asked for an, an exception for the Board of Commissioners to allow us to have the additional, it's one additional car. We have done what code enforcement has asked us to do, we cleared out the garage so that we could have the additional car inside, so there, there would only be four on the outside at all times. Of course, the other exception is to grant the additional people that are living there. In some ways, we are kind of violating, and in some ways, I don't feel like we are. It does help out financially, I'm an only child, I don't have anybody else to assist me with the care of my father. He does need, well, he doesn't require nursing care, you know, like some, you know, like a nurse 24 hours a day. We do have to have somebody around the house 24 hours a day. With the cancer on his brain, he does have brain seizures that can happen at any time. Last year, that resulted in fractured ribs, a broken wrist, he fell on the steps, he hurt his knee. It's, it's been a lot. Of course, I'm, I'm not married. I have my mother who was living there, and you'll, if you'll see that on the original paperwork, Phyllis Covick, she was actually put into nursing home in January. And then, actually, last week, the nursing home called me and they released her suddenly, and she's now staying with me. So, we're just asking for an exception. We're trying our best to keep everything within code. I understand that over the last couple of years, that things have not been properly upkept at my father's house, and I've been working very diligently to ensure that, you know, everything is upkept. I've tried to use state resources, you know, he is on Medicare. The state of Georgia did not approve to, what's the word I'm looking for? With their Medicaid program, they did not actually choose to make it bigger. So he doesn't qualify for any government assistance in the aspect that when my stepmother died, he got the survivor's social security, which put him about $200 over the threshold, so we lost our Medicaid care. Again, I'm just kind of giving you some background. The main reason is Rahon, who lives downstairs, Elvis is his boyfriend, and that's why there's two additional residents downstairs. Or, you know, there's an additional person downstairs, it's not that they're living separately, they actually live together, and he's moved in throughout the time. And they, Rahon does help out financially, my son helps out financially, and Sydney, who left the, who has left the military and come to stay with my dad to kind of help out, as she is not necessarily certified, but that was one of the reasons, is that Rahon's there during the day and Sydney's there during the night. My son, of course, works a full job, a full-time job, he works about 50, 60 hours a week currently. And that's my case. You know, we're, we're trying to do everything we can, we have tried to, we've done our best, or we have, from my understanding, as of right now, met code enforcement guidelines with the vehicles, with the yard being upkept and the trash that needed to be removed from the house. Again, there's just not many, there's not many options in the Cobb County government when people need assistance of this nature. I've done what I can to try to make sure that my family is supported and that we're able to live. And he's acquired probably over $100,000 of medical debt between immunotherapy, scans, PET scans, everything else. It's, it's very, been a very troubling time. I know that there have been, again, we do acknowledge that there have been complaints against his property over the years. And I, I don't plan on there being any other complaints now, you know, now that I've kind of taken over everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now hear from those in opposition, you'll have a total of 10 minutes. If there's more than one speaker, just be mindful of your time to allow the other person to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Taylor, and I live in the neighborhood, and we've just received so many complaints about this house going back 15 years. I've actually typed up the, from code enforcement website, a lot of the complaints. There have been too many cars at this house for 15 years, as many as eight or nine. It's unclear because the neighbor, between them, at one time, there were 13 cars, and code couldn't determine whose was whose. I don't live on the street, I have good friends who live on the street, and, and they've told me that there are two apartments in the house. In addition to the house, I've looked on the tax assessor's website, and Redfin and Zillow and all that, and I get a variation of square footage from 2,400 to 4,400. We don't see that permits were pulled to make these apartments, some ads say two bedrooms, four bathrooms, some say six bedrooms, four bathrooms, it, it's just all unclear. I, we do have a lot of compassion for the Cowick family, they've been in our neighborhood for years. And I understand that they're going through a lot. But most of the complaints we have started way before that, and I, I do want to say this, I got a And I do want to say this. I got a call about four weeks ago to Lisa, what is this blue sign in the yard? And I went over the next day, and the blue sign was not there. And so it was on my radar, and I looked for the blue sign almost every single day for, since then, four or five weeks ago. And I never saw the blue sign until this morning. It hasn't been posted. I would have been here to oppose at the planning commission meeting. I was totally surprised that it was, when I watched the meeting, I was shocked because the sign had not been displayed. My friend went yesterday to take pictures of the house, and the sign was not up yesterday. This morning, it's up with, like, the sticks were there, but the sign itself was not up there. So for that reason alone, perhaps you could delay a ruling on this and check out what's really going on at the house. They're just, from what I understand, there's Rohan and his partner in an apartment, Sydney and her boyfriend in an apartment, and her son and her dad, and I don't know how many other people live there, but there's, we don't have a problem with four cars. Four cars are okay per code. We prefer that they be in the driveway, but it's the people that are, too many people, there have been too many people for fifteen years. And I just don't, we just need somehow to bring this into single-family dwelling compliance. And this sort of has come to a head at this point because there are two other houses on the street that are corporate, talking about corporate-owned houses, and each one has sent me a lease with five unrelated individuals in it, and we know a sixth person lives in each house. So that's six cars at those two houses, and one is right next door. So it's just, this is a tiny street with a lot going on, and we're just looking for some help, perhaps a delay would be good, and then some investigation could be done to to find out how many people really live in this house. I mean, there's a sidewalk on the left side of the house that's been there for years and years, and I've watched for years and years, people get out of the car and go around to a back apartment. And then we understand there's an apartment on the right side of the house. So it's, for years, the next-door neighbor that's now corporate was just a single lady, and she let them park their cars in front of her house, which three or four cars in front of her house. It's just, it's been going on and on and on and on, and to see now asking for an LUP to have all these cars after fifteen years, I just like, maybe it's because the next-door neighbor, they can't use that part of the cul-de-sac to park in. It's just a lot, and we'd like to resolve the single-family dwelling issue. We do not have a problem with four cars because that's what code allows. And with a two-car garage, they can have six cars, and two, four in the garage, or two in the garage and four in the driveway. That's not a problem. It's the number of people that have been an ongoing, ongoing issue for years. There've been, I think, four citations, gone to court four times, and about all these people. And outside stor, outside storage has been a big part of it, too, and she admitted that. And it will get fixed, and two weeks later, it's back where it was, and then the Coecks have supported the HOA voluntarily a couple of times. They're not members of our HOA, so we, we don't really have any say over the yard of the grass, and we've had to leave it to Code Enforcement. And they've done a good job of coming out whenever we needed them to, which is quite often. So. Anything to add? Okay, thank you. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Sure.
Okay. No problem. You'll be sworn in.
Hi, I'm Cindy Peterson. I've been in the neighborhood thirty-nine years. We're just trying to keep our home values up, trying to keep the neighborhood safe, keep other residents from complaining. That's the smallest cul-de-sac in our neighborhood. If the three homes were to back up, they have slanted, sloped driveways. If they were to back up and come out, they'd all hit each other. So the cars on the street are a huge issue for anybody trying to get out of their home, and we want it back to single family, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, not seeing anyone else in opposition, I will turn things over to you, Commissioner.
Yeah, Lisa, can you come up?
Good afternoon. You're Lisa Foster, Cobb County Code Enforcement.
We're giving you a workout today, aren't we? Well, at least I am. I know this is a result of code of several code enforcement violations over the years, and I wanted to ask, have you verified the number of people inside, or you just have been, have you been invited in to see the downstairs and upstairs, or just the outside?
Code enforcement does not go inside of properties. It's a safety hazard. We inspect the outside. What we do is called early morning inspections and investigate how many vehicles we're seeing. Like, the only way we have, the only way we would know how many people is in there is if they tell us. And at the last hearing, the owner's daughter stated that there were five adults in the house, and a few of them were non-related. This property, we know that they're in violation for the vehicles. This property has been to court multiple times. This property has had issues with single-family dwelling for the last ten years, along with multiple code violations frequently.
Right, okay. I just, I wasn't sure, because on the application, it's different than what I heard at the planning commission tape. But I'll ask the applicant, let's see. So, yeah, this has been going on a while. I know the, the neighbors' opposition that just spoke gave us a list, too, of complaints. Were you aware of any rental going on outside?
No.
Of relatives? Of the unrelated rental? Okay. I'll ask the applicant.
We only, only when they filed the complaint that they stated that there was a Facebook ad renting out basement apartments. But otherwise, net, outside of the complaint, we weren't aware of any advertisements or any, you know, online advertisements like Zillow or anything like that, renting properties or?
Okay. So not, not like an Airbnb?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So this has been going on for ten years? They've been sighted at this location?
They have. This property owner, which is the applicant's father, has been cited by us multiple occasions. Even included on this case, a citation was issued on April eighth for single-family dwelling. There's been all other violations at the property for outside storage multiple times, grass, vehicles parking on the grass.
Okay. So when was your last inspection? Have you been out there since this was filed? Since the look?
The last inspection was by our officer that does the early morning inspections. When he does an investigation, it's a two-week process, so I can't just regularly go out there and see five cars and assume that they're in violation. It has to be multiple days out of a week. So once they applied for, they submitted their application for zoning, that stops my enforcement until a decision's made in regards to the amount of adults or the amount of vehicles, but any other violation outside of the application, we are able to enforce.
Okay, so how many cars were out there when, the last time they were sighted and then filed the look?
So they passed the last inspection in June, but when they were sighted in April, when they were sighted in April, they were sighted based off of the occupancy statement that they provided showing the amount of unrelated people at the property. But as far as the vehicles they had during the early morning inspections, the most vehicles they had that was observed was four.
Was how many?
Four.
Outside?
Mm-hmm, that was in June.
And that's allowed? But there were more when they, before they cleaned out the garage and are now parking in the garage, correct?
Yes, ma'am. They would, they have prior cases that had more vehicles being observed. On occasion, it would be five vehicles.
Okay. And I think they're, they're asking for six with four outside and two in the garage? On the application, let me see. Now, I think they've come into compliance with four outside now. So the issue, I guess, is just the number of adults, unrelated or family plus unrelated. Okay. I don't have anything else for you, Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions for clarification. You mentioned in April, there was a code violation for single-family dwelling. Is that primarily because of renting the basement, or is it something else?
Yes, it was an occupancy statement that they filled out, and they listed who lives in the house, and there were multiple adults that were unrelated in the house. That was the reason for the citation in April.
Okay. And in reviewing the handout that was just issued to us, I noticed on eleven-twenty-two, there was a citation for outside storage, and on the eighteenth, it was brought into compliance. That was in November twenty-twenty-two. But in January of twenty-twenty-three, just a couple of months later, there is violation of outside storage, which they brought into compliance just a few, few days later. And then there's a third occurrence of outside storage, and they brought that also into compliance. But it just seems, and I need for you to confirm for me, there appears to be this pattern of your issue to citation, we'll clean it up, and then when the dust settles, we'll just violate again. Because these occurrences are very close to each other, so I just wanted to confirm, or have you confirm, whether or not there's been a pattern with the outside storage?
There has been. For the last ten years, it's been violations.
For the last ten years, yeah.
Violations. I just reviewed it on, on a system, and it's been about ten, ten years' worth of violations.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Can the applicant?
One question for the applicant, not for you, Lisa.
Okay, well, I'm calling her up.
Okay.
Can you come up, back up, ma'am? Hi. Okay, I have several questions. Do you want to? Okay, so give us the rundown of the family members and the unrelated renters or caregivers or what?
Absolutely, so.
Who's actually in the house upstairs and downstairs.
So the house is a pretty big house. It's actually three levels, and it is in the center of the cul-de-sac, as was previously mentioned. When you look at the house, on the left, there's actually stairs that go down below, and, which was a basement, and it was built into an in-law suite. I did, of course, previously, previously state that my mother was actually living there. And when I had to put her into nursing home, I had, that's when Rohan actually moved in. Yes, I did put a ad up on Facebook to rent out that place. Rohan had a partner, Elvis, nevertheless. So it's Rohan that lives downstairs with his partner in the in-law suite. On the main house, you have my father lives upstairs, and then there's two additional bedrooms, and Sydney lives in the front one, and my son lives in the back one. On the right side of the house, my dad was actually a woodworker. He did cabinetry throughout his whole life. Multiple projects, very well aware of his issue with trash. Anyway, I can't get past that with my father at that time. Of course, it, well, he's no longer working, and that would never, would never happen again. But on the right side, he has a workshop with, like, saws that he would, you know, do things for different things, and I'm sure that some of that trash was a result of it. I did hear mention of numerous car violations. If you actually go back, they were actually my vehicles. I was living there with my son when I went back to school. So I lived there for six years when I went back to college. So several times, those were probably my cars that were in actual violation. We actually, we had a car that didn't have tags on it, and so if you look at the actual code violations, they're minor in some ways in the aspect that they were more for tag, him not having tags on his vehicles. He likes to buy old vehicles and fix them up. Whatever. The one vehicle in the garage now is an old Jeep that, you know, he will, refuses to let me get rid of, even though he cannot drive. But you have to let them have something, I guess, to look forward to in their elder age. Again, we do acknowledge some of the things that have happened over the past and potential history, not intentionally actually violating, you know, sometimes things just happen. But I do want to say that it's never been intentional on anybody's behalf, and once it was always pointed out that we've done, made sure that it was cleaned up. Again, I became power of attorney over my father in October of last year, after he seized and was in the hospital. And since then, I've done everything I can to try to keep us up to code, and that would be what I would do going forward. If we don't win this case, I'm probably going to have to move in there, and we'll be back here again, because I'm going to be violating again, because I'll have to move my mom in there with me. So I would just, whatever we can do to satisfy the requirements, we are more than happy to. Financially, it's a necessity for us with his, or for me, for his medical care. So there's my, sorry.
Okay, so tell me, your father and your son, so they are related.
Absolutely.
And Sydney is?
Sydney's his niece, but she doesn't qualify under the direct family members. She doesn't, there's.
A niece doesn't qualify?
No, no, ma'am. It has to be like.
Immediate family?
Yes, ma'am. And I was very honest. I'm the one that turned in the paperwork to acknowledge how many people were living there, not at any time if I tried to, you know, hide what, you know, who was living there, or what, you know, or anything of that nature. I'm the one that actually had it notarized and turned it in, which resulted in the violation of the single-family dwelling.
Okay, and so the two gentlemen that live downstairs in the basement, are they renters or?
I guess technically, you could call them renters. Yes, they do help out. They, they do pay monthly to my father. Rohan was, the main purpose for Rohan was to give my dad actual, you know, the twenty-four-hour care so that there would be somebody else there. I don't live there. And of course, it's only natural that he would pay to live there, but I'm the one that did that, that had him move in, and in the interim, of course, he asked if his significant other could stay. I didn't know that that would actually be an issue, but, so, you know, yes, they do pay. Yes, he, they do pay or, you know, they.
And does everyone except for your father, of course, work full-time outside of the home?
Yes, well, Sydney goes to, is going to college at Kennesaw State and then she does work as well. But yes, they all, they all do work. Yes, ma'am.
So, I think you said Rohan?
Rohan, yes.
Rohan? Is he considered the caregiver for your father?
He was considered, him and Sydney are considered, are what I consider to be my caregivers. Elvis is just kind of a third party. I mean, you know, I don't have any dealings with Elvis, but Rohan was the intention of him moving in. And, and he works full-time, but he does work remotely, so he's not outside of the house. You know, he's, he does work. Yes, ma'am. And so, and that was mainly to, again, I needed somebody that was there in case anything was to happen to my father. I don't know if any of you have ever dealt with anybody that has brain cancer or metastasized cancer. It's not just in his brain. We had five surgeries last year. It is gallbladder removed. He has an eight-inch graft on the back of his head where they removed it off of his brain. I mean, it's, we under, I understand everything. His first diagnosis, pandemic started in 2020, right? So, the first melanoma diagnosis was in 2020. So, I have been dealing with this and prior sickness since before then.
So, I, I know you're aware that our code currently is a family and one outsider.
Yes, ma'am.
And when we revised that code, gosh, five, four, five, six years ago? We added the one outside person with the family for caregiver nanny for families, for, you know, additional person outside to be a caregiver or a nanny for certain circumstances like that. But, you know, my, I guess my vision of a caregiver would be someone like nurses around the clock or someone there 24/7. I know, you know, you work full-time, but you go there at night and can care for your dad then.
But I don't live there, though.
No, you don't live there.
Right. I, I could, I mean, there's, yes, I could potentially go there every evening. I work in the medical field, so I generally work 12-hour shifts. And now I have my mom living with me as she was released from the nursing home care from Pruitt last week. They gave me 48 hours because she no longer met their requirements. Yes, ma'am, you are correct.
Yeah, and, I mean, I understand, you know, the medical issues and the family situation. But some of these violations have been going on for 10 years and that's concerning. And with surrounding neighbors that we haven't even gotten there yet, but.
I, I did get signatures from all neighbors that touch our property that were in favor. I, I, it is in my vehicle. I didn't bring my paperwork with me and I do apologize about that. I can actually go get that or bring that back. But I did talk to my neighbors concerning that and they were all okay. I have two neighbors on the side. And one of them rents out to college kids. And there has been a car problem. We've had Sarah who sold her house to a corporation. They've, they've now had, they're on their fourth renters coming in, all college students. You then have my, my house here and then you have the house to the, if you're looking at it to the left, the Maronis who also signed off on it too. Well, they have three kids and they've been in violation of code enforcement numerous times as well for cars. And so, some of the car violations have been a combination of everything. Now, our cul-de-sac is not, it's not, it's not a three street. There's no reason for anybody to even come down that street technically unless they live on that street or they're delivering something. So, the car issue seems, it, it's really only relegated to the few people that are right there. But I, I do have the signatures from everybody that touches our property as I was asked to do when I filled out the paperwork.
But we have received other complaints too, from the neighbors, neighborhood.
I'm not negating the fact that he's had, you know, I'm sorry, that he's had complaints. I do know that he's had complaints. Of course, I'm not aware of all of them, but it doesn't necessarily mean, the, the pattern we're trying to break now. So that we're no longer in violation.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. You can have a seat.
Okay.
Oh, you do. I'm sorry, we have one more question from another commissioner. I apologize.
It was, I, I was curious on your, where you resided because I wasn't clear on that at the beginning. And, you know, some of the steps you had taken towards compliance since you've taken out on power of attorney, which I probably could ask you, Lisa, as well, now that I know the answer to her residency situation. But I guess what I am kinda confused about is in the way this is written and it says fourth-degree family member. And so, a niece is not considered fourth degree?
No, neither was my mom considered a family member either because her and my dad are divorced and he's the homeowner.
In the way our code defines it, Commissioner Richardson, it should have to be within fourth degree and that's per, per OCGA 5321. And that includes parents, grandparents, children, grandchildren, and brothers and sisters. That's it. It doesn't include cousins or nieces or.
Because like, when I think of, if it's his, I guess that's right, if it's his niece, okay. It's his niece, not your niece.
Correct.
Which is what initially threw me off. Okay. And so, in the case that, okay, nope. And then you answered the other question and another answer you gave. Okay, that, that, thank you.
I just also have one point of clarification. You mentioned in your testimony earlier that Sydney boyfriend, boyfriend lived at the house, but I didn't, did you?
No, that was actually somebody else, the lady that was up here. Sydney, when she moved in, she does have a boyfriend. I don't think they're together anymore, but when she moved in several months ago, that was in April when all that happened. It was actually during spring break week. All the, everybody's off of school and out of work and not going to college. There were multiple cars in the cul-de-sac that weekend and her boyfriend was around to assist her with moving in. But he does not stay there. He doesn't stay there at night or anything of that nature.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Well. I, I understand and sympathize with you for what you're going through medically. And I, I wouldn't be concerned with the niece staying there even though she's not technically related. But I, I do have an issue with two unrelated renting out the basement. And I, to me, there's a difference of looking in on your father as opposed to a full-time caregiver that is there, you know, with him 24/7 or at least all day and someone else taking over, you know, like shifts or whatever. Because I don't consider that a caregiver if they're not there, you know, full-time or that's their primary job. And then, you know, e- even if you counted Sydney as family, she's upstairs with your son and your father. And you're renting out the basement to two unrelated and the code is family plus one outside. So, I guess, I, I don't know. I'll listen to the board suggestions. But I, I, with all these complaints and opposition that has spoken, I have a hard time with identifying a renter as a caregiver and granting this permit.
Understood. I see Commissioner Richardson had her hand up.
I was gonna say, it would be a little bit easier because I, I'm on the same vein with you in thinking, you know, there's an allowance that could be made for the niece and then that frees you up with one caregiver. But for the caregiver, what's easier to understand is usually you're paying for a caregiver or they're doing it for free because it's a family member or something of the sort, not necessarily that they're paying you something. So, it's, it's hard to reconcile that transaction as a true caregiver. Because it, they're, they're not really rendering a service at that point. It's more of a favor. And so, I would say that doesn't really comply, but if, I think if there are different arrangements made, a true caregiver could be in that, in that basement area to assist, but it would have to be a caregiver, not necessarily a tenant. So, that's, yeah, I think there can be an allowance. I, I would, I would be amenable to allowing, making a provision for the niece. But that would still leave her with finding a care, an appropriate caregiver for the father.
Yeah, because now that the niece is in school.
Right.
Or, and working, she's not there to be a licensed or special caregiver.
Right, and I, I was just gonna basically echo and support Richardson's sentiment regarding caregiving. And if the niece, Sydney, she's in school and she's working, I'm not sure how much care she's actually rendering to him. And as far as I think Rohan and Elvis, I, I don't know if they were the tenants that responded to the Facebook ad. I think that's what you communicated earlier. So, I, I don't know if the ad solicited a caregiver or if that was just a part of the arrangement after the fact. But I, I don't know that it really fits the responsibility or the role of a caregiver or if it was more of an agreement to check on your father. The other concern, I understand that Rohan works from home, but are there any situations or scenarios or times in which he needs to go into the office or he may need to travel? I mean, I don't know that level of detail. But it just seems to me that there's just an arrangement for him to possibly check on your father, not really provide care.
I'm sorry, we'll have, yeah, thank you. We're, are not going to discuss this without you being here at the podium. So, if the commissioner calls you back, then we can engage in further dialogue.
Did you have questions for her?
I just wanna chime in. I do know of persons who have aging family members who have solicited roommates for the purpose of providing some type of assistance without it being referred to as a caregiver. I do know that occurs. I don't have necessarily an issue with this and I think this is part of our challenge as we contemplate allowing additional persons in the home. I do have an issue with the number of vehicles and the number of disruptions to the, to the neighbors. And this is why there is a conservative approach to the number of people that live in a space because there is an expectation when people move into a single-family home for it to have that single-family character. And so, if it was just that construct of having support for their father, having the niece there, I, I would be more amenable if it wasn't that activity plus all of these other things going on. There is a long history of code enforcement infractions, some of them less recent than others. And things may be improved, you know, moving forward, but I'm, I'm not in a position to be able to articulate that. I can understand the concerns leading up to you being here today and us weighing this. But I can share as our population ages that this is probably not a unique arrangement. And I personally know of persons who have solicited, I mean, say persons who, I'm, I'm in a legal profession and I'm part of a group of, of other attorneys and there have been direct solicitations for assistance for somebody to move into their home to provide some type of assistance without being called a caregiver to an aging parent. So, I, I know that occurs and it's not just of persons who may be considered deviant or not wanting to comply with what's in a homeowner or what people just trying to take care of their family and put food on the table and keep a roof over their head. So, I'm sensitive to that. And, um, this may not be helpful to you. I'm just making an observation that I know this construct exists. And it is very difficult.
It's, it's, I know, it is difficult. And like y'all said, I have no problem with the niece being there because even though she's not, you know, first line of dissent or whatever for what the code says. But she is, is related. It may be distant like, like a fourth cousin or niece or whatever. I'm just saying. But I do, I do have an issue with two renters that are not related in the basement. The father is upstairs and looking in on the father or is not a full-time caregiver position. They're not, you know, from an agency or, and they're in the basement. But, uh, and there are other violations too that, you know, with the outdoor storage, cars and all that that have been, they have been cited for. Not, not necessarily just the number of, of adults. So, um, I guess I'm ready to make a motion, but I'm not sure it's gonna.
I know I want to just make one point. I know Commissioner Richardson, now I hear Sheffield. I pers, I think I read in here the code allows 12 persons to live in that home if they were related. So, is the issue really the number of people or what their relationship is? And can you really tell the difference of someone who's living in a place as their home if they're renting or not? If, I don't, and I didn't ask how long they've been there. I think there's been activity of people moving in and moving out according to the residents. But I don't know if it's the number of people or the relationship that's really the issue as much as that other activity. And maybe the number of cars may, may be an issue that we hone in. But I don't, I don't, I'm not perceiving that four persons under this construct is an issue. Related or unrelated.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, what I was offering up was approving the niece as a okay. And so, that way, like if, I don't know if we can say the niece is family. And so, if the niece is family, then she still has a caregiver spot that's available. It doesn't cover Elvis. It doesn't cover any other conversations that may.
First name basis here.
We've been on a first name basis.
That's all we know. We know Elvis, we know her. But it doesn't cover, doesn't cover him. It doesn't cover whatever arrangement might exist. I'm just, I, I added in maybe some extra clarification around. Usually when you see a caregiver, there's an exchange of services. That's a part of that, but by saying the niece is family, you get a caregiver spot.
I don't have a problem with that.
Right, and that's why, but I, I don't know if that's something new ones as in as a motion, but.
One outside, in fact.
And that would be a conversation that we're talking.
I know, but. The current. The current situation is not acceptable right now, but you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted, John, if you would, for the record, just for clarification for those that are watching and following, sitting in the audience. The code, just tell us what the code allows. We know that it allows for 12 adults, two related adults, and three unrelated. Right? So what they're asking for is an additional unrelated adult at the property.
Two unrelated adults, because the niece does not qualify. So the family plus her would meet the code. So the two, the two folks in the basement who are renting would be two more unrelated people.
Okay.
It sounds like they've taken care of the number of cars, because they have four parked outside and one in the garage. So that should be taken care of. It sounds like the issue regarding the trash has been taken care of. So this is really an issue of the two unrelated renters in the basement.
So that's what this boils down to, two unrelated adults. I'm sorry, John, can you clarify? Maybe I misheard you. You said they have taken care of the trash outside?
It sounds like the trash has been cleaned up. I have to verify that with the applicant. Yeah, she's shaking her head yes. And it sounds like a lot of the trash was due to the dad's woodworking activities in the past.
So, well, Commissioner, you had something? Yeah, I just wanted to add that this is definitely a difficult situation, and I completely understand. I am also a caregiver to my mom, and it is a full-time job, even though I am here performing duties as well. So I can certainly understand we're having someone there, even if it's to look after your dad in the case of an emergency. I understand having that person there. Again, to the chair's point, I don't know if it's a question of the number of unrelated adults, or if the issue is compounded by the years and years, even a decade of violations on the property. And I think because of the violation, it's really magnifying and exasperating the challenge and the issue here. I'm glad to learn that the property has been cleaned up, but it's been cleaned up in the past, right? So, you know, what assurances would we, or even the neighbors, have for you not being in compliance again? So, on this one, Commissioner, I'll just follow your lead. It's just a tough one. It's just a tough one.
Yeah. Well, the current situation, to me, should be denied. If we allow it for, what, a 12-month period, John?
The planning commission, the planning commission did recommend 12 months for approval.
But for what they, what they're asking, for, for six? I mean, for three unrelated?
For three unrelated, yes. It was for 12 months for the planning commission.
Okay, well, my motion's gonna be a little different. Does staff have a recommendation?
The staff rec was to deny it based on the complaints from code enforcement.
Right. Okay, so, we'll make a motion to approve for 12 months for the three family members, and we'll consider the niece a family, upstairs, and one outside person. But it needs to be a caregiver, a true caregiver for your father. And then you will need to come into compliance with all the code enforcement violations, and Ulysses can keep up with that for us. And I guess no more than four cars outside, and one or two in the garage. And all the other violations, you have to come into compliance within 30 days. And then, should any more violations come within this 12-month period? When you come back to renew, that will be noted, if there are any others. And we'll see how it goes for 12 months.
Okay, I'll second for discussion. Help me understand here. You said for the three family members, but I see two family members upstairs, the father and the niece.
Well, we're making an exception for Sydney to be related.
And the mother. Is the mother coming?
Her brother, I mean, her son.
Your son.
I forgot.
Forget about that. The father, the grandson, his grandson, and his niece, which doesn't fall into the code, but that will be the exception for her to be family. And then one outside person as a caregiver. But, do we have a definition of caregiver in the code?
No, we don't.
Yeah.
See, that's the problem.
Yeah, I would be hard pressed to. Because there's different definitions of caregiver, and that unrelated person, she's allowed an unrelated, well, the niece is that. But I have an issue with being, I have an issue if we're not going to allow the person downstairs. Not Elvis, Rohan, if he can't qualify as a caregiver. I have a guess.
I think because we don't have a definition for caregiver, it's just the code, which is, there's one additional unrelated adult. So you've got the family, that is, and we're adding the niece as part of the family for 12 months.
Are we adding the niece's family?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So...
But one outside.
And then one outside.
Which is Rohan.
Right.
But when we changed, when we changed that code to allow for one additional outside, the examples we used were for a nanny that would live in to take care of kids, or a caregiver to take care of elderly or sick.
I remember the case.
But we don't have, we don't have actual caregiver. But my issue with the renter or renters in the basement have full-time jobs. So they're not, to me, really caregivers. And if they're, if they have full-time jobs, even if they're working from home and are there during the day, they're in the basement, the father who's ill is upstairs, and they're, one of them is just looking in on him. That's not, to me, that's not a caregiver that's there full-time.
I think there are a number of adults who are taking care of parents who classify themselves as a caregiver who work full-time.
Yeah.
There are a number of people who have elderly parents who go to work, take care of their own children, and then take care of a parent who are their parent's caregiver. So I am hard pressed to be that narrow in qualifying on what a caregiver is by being somebody who does not have another full-time job.
But they're also related.
And that example I gave you, that was, but in the prior cases that we had, one that prompted this discussion, I know there was a nurse coming in, providing additional care to a family, to a husband and wife.
And I think there are differing degrees of caregiving. You have, and I'll use myself for example, it is a huge challenge caring for my mom. Would I consider myself a full-time caregiver to her? Yes. But I'm also here. But I care for her by monitoring her on a camera. The anxiety that I deal with every day I'm on this day is unbelievable. So I can certainly sympathize and understand the desire to have someone there if they're doing nothing more than just checking in.
Great. And then let's put ourselves in Rohan's position. So you're working, you're checking in on someone, and then caregivers also need support. All right? So he has his significant other. I mean, that could be a stretch for some. To me, I just don't perceive it a stretch if we're inserting ourselves in the people's homes and how they live, and how they take care of each other. Particularly when that number of persons is allowed in a home.
The only thing I'll add to my comment with respect to Rohan and Elvis is that they were not brought on or brought into the property as the caregiver, regardless of how we describe caregiving or the definition of a caregiver. They were brought on as tenants through a Facebook ad, and it might have been a later agreement that he would look after the father.
Who's to say the two weren't conflated? Because again, I know the construct where, again, I have a professional peer that put out in a post, they were looking for someone to live in a home, and a tenant who can check on their mom throughout the day as part of that post, who I would classify as being that loose definition of a caregiver. Now, I haven't seen the post. I don't know. So maybe there's an assumption, there may be an assumption.
Right. Because when she mentioned earlier about the Facebook post, she did not mention anything about it being connected to caring for her father.
I just want to chime in by saying the sentiment, conceptually, I absolutely agree that we know that things are changing on the horizon. That is why this is being looked at from a code perspective. But because there are so many facets to that conversation, we cannot reconcile that as a part of this particular... I wouldn't recommend that we reconcile that as a part of this case. But it does give her the opportunity by us adding a new family member
I agree.
to the, to this particular situation. It gives her the flexibility to have whatever subsequent conversations she needs to have in her, in that home to resolve whatever arrangement needs to be made with regards to the two that are currently residing in the basement. And we, you know, like I said, there are just, there are too many facets for us to be able to reconcile in this, in this case.
I don't disagree with you. And I was there. I forgot the son was there. I really did. Yeah, I was... I hear you, and I think that's a wise observation.
So the motion is the three family members upstairs, including the niece, and one outside caregiver. That's the motion. And the second.
Okay.
Are you still good with the second?
I just want to ask for clarification. Are we specifying the word caregiver? Because we've already determined that caregiver doesn't have a definition. The code would just stand that she has an unrelated person.
One outside.
And so that way, instead of, because we just don't have that at this point.
One outside person. But...
Understood. Yeah, I think that, yeah.
Do you need to address the vehicles also?
When I gave her, four vehicles outside is the max, and to come into compliance within 30 days for all the other violations.
All right. So we have that motion and second, as it has been clarified. Are there any other comments or questions? We'll call the question. The motion passes 4-0, with Commissioner Garmble being absent. Commissioners, we have two other business items, I believe, to hear. Our cases are taking long today. We can break for lunch and come back and hear those, or we can power through, which could, by the way things are going, take at least another hour. Power through. What about you, Mama?
We'll follow your lead, Richardson.
Do we have a lot of opposition on these upcoming cases? What do we anticipate? Do we anticipate an hour?
We have one in Commissioner Burrows District for Whataburger. And then we have one in Commissioner Sheffield's District for Hilltop Shopping Center.
Okay, do you perceive, I won't be mad, but do you perceive them being more than the 30 minutes that normally?
All right. All right, let's do a quick head count for both of these. For other business 31 of 2024, Whataburger, is there anyone here opposed to that case?
It's an applicant here.
Yes, he is here.
Okay.
Okay, so there's no one here opposed to OB 31. For OB 44, Hilltop Shopping Center, is there anyone here opposed to other business 44?
You do have one opposite.
One. We have one person opposed, and the applicant is here for that case.
You'll do it? All right, we're taking your lead here.
I'm starving.
Do you want, do you want a potentially hangry commissioner dispositioning your application? Are you okay? Do you think we can, do you think, what do you want to do? Do you want to take a quick break? Do you want to take a break? All right, so let's go through, which one is next? Is it District 3?
31.
All right, let's go ahead.
Okay.
Captain, Captain.
Okay.
What happened to our candy, Megan?
Okay, I'll go ahead and call this case. Next case is other business item number 31 of 2024. It's to consider amending the site plan stipulations for Whataburger regarding rezoning application Z115 of 1998 and Z116 of 1996, for property located at the southeast intersection of Sandy Plains Road and Shalafa Road, and Land Lot 386 and 387 of the 16th District. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 31? And let the record show us no one opposed.
All right, the Cliff Notes version.
Yes, we can do that. This is another business application. We represent Whataburger and the applicant. In this application, this is at the intersection of Shalafa Road and Sandy Plains. It is a former O'Charley's, when this was originally rezoned in the late 90s. There was stipulation that went into place that would prohibit a drive-through location here, as well as part of the other ones. Since that time, the world has become a different place. This intersection is now much larger, serves a much larger community. It now has five bank branches with drive-throughs, five fast foods with drive-throughs, including a Chick-fil-A that's adjacent, a Wendy's, a Taco Bell, a Jim and Nick's, and a Starbucks, all right here. So we think that's supportive of allowing for approval of this particular other business application. This also is controlled by an Architectural Control Committee, which has actually approved. The architectural elevation is in the process of working through the final landscape plan as well, so that this can be redeveloped, instead of being a dark O'Charley's, be a brand-new Whataburger. We appreciate your approval today. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any opposition. John, can you let us know what staff's recommendation is?
Yes, the staff would recommend the board approve the request, subject to the district commissioner approving the final landscape and elevations after approval by the Architectural Control Committee, subject to site plan review comments, stormwater management comments, fire department comments, and COB DOT comments contained in the other business packet, and all previous conditions not in conflict, to remain in effect.
Thank you. I'll turn things over to the commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this was held because of the Architectural Control Committee getting all the documents and the members meeting. And as Mr. Moore said, there are several fast food restaurants and banks in the area that do have drive-throughs. And the only thing that has not been approved with the Architectural Control Committee and me and the county arbers is the final landscape plan. So that will, that will need to come back for approval first through the county arbers and Architectural Control Committee and district commissioner. So I would make a motion to approve OB 31. So I would make a motion to approve OB thirty-one with the stipulation of the final landscape plan and site plan to come back for approval through the Architectural Control Committee, county arborists for landscape, and district commissioner, and all other recommendations, staff recommendations and comments not otherwise in conflict remain.
Second, any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero with Commissioner Garmble being absent.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Alright, we'll now hear our last matter of the day.
Okay. Last case is other business item number forty-four of twenty twenty-four, which is to consider amending the stipulations for Hilltop Rough Snow LLC and Hilltop TIC LP regarding rezoning application Z eleven of twenty sixteen. The property is located at the southeast corner of Veterans Memorial Highway and Powell Drive in Land Lot thirty-four of the eighteenth district. The applicant is present, and earlier there's one person here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good afternoon. I'm Lita Dunleavy on behalf of the applicants, I feel like I just won the lottery after such a long wait. With me here today is Tom Luters with MCRE Management Properties Partners, excuse me, the property manager, and Roy Taylor, the architect, in the event that you have any questions. We are before you today, as explained briefly in the agenda item, to clean up conditions that were imposed pursuant to rezoning of the subject property back in two thousand and sixteen, again in two thousand and seventeen, and most recently in two thousand and nineteen. In March of two thousand and nineteen, there were certain conditions imposed that required approval by the district commissioner, then Ms. Cupid, or approved within a specified period of time. Due to the tortured history of this property, unfortunately, those approvals in the time specified were not secured. My client purchased the property, which is known as the Hilltop Shopping Center, in early two thousand and seventeen. At that time, the property did not conform with its zoning. It was less than twenty-four percent occupied and had fallen into a state of disrepair. In the intervening years, MCRE has repaired and painted the exterior of the building, fronting on Veterans Memorial. It has removed a non-conforming approximate thirty-foot-tall monument sign and installed a new one. It has installed concrete curb landscape islands and shade trees in the front parking lot. It has removed the accumulated debris and trash on site, including hundreds of illegally dumped tires at the rear of this property. It has hired full-time maintenance and property maintenance staff. It has constructed a new waste enclosure at the rear of the property for the shopping center. It has secured new tenants for the center, including Studio Seventy-four Barbers, Kings and Queens Furniture, and the Green Room Restaurant and Entertainment Venue. Currently, the shopping center is forty-seven percent occupied. Seventy-eight percent is occupied on the first floor. They have repaved and restriped the front and rear parking lots. They have constructed a wrought iron fence as required as one of the stipulations of zoning along the eastern property line. And they have renovated multiple tenant spaces. They've made capital improvements of more than six hundred thousand dollars into the property. And they have, as I said, hired local management, maintenance, and security staff. I don't want to belabor the point here simply because I know you've been here a long time, so I'll just show you one photograph of the many that I have that shows you, if you could zoom out, the before and after. The top picture is before in two thousand and seventeen, and you can see the dramatic improvement on the bottom photograph, which was August of twenty twenty-four. However, my clients have been unable to secure the final certificate of occupancy for the property to allow for leasing of the remaining vacant tenant spaces. In an effort to understand what needed to be done, myself and representatives of the management company met with the community development people in March of twenty twenty-four, and we were advised that to finalize the approvals necessary to lease out these vacant tenant spaces, we would need to file an other business application, which is why we're here before you today. We need approval of the final site plan, the landscaping plan, and the final building and architectural colors, which were part of the stipulations back in two thousand and nineteen. Since that time, we have met with Commissioner Sheffield and communicated repeatedly with the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. During these negotiations, we have agreed to conditions of approval should the board decide to approve this application. The conditions, there are nine stipulations, which I have provided to community development and to Commissioner Sheffield this morning. I'll put them up on the overhead, I believe that you all should have them in your packet. But they were kind of a last-minute agreement. I understand that the Mabelton Improvement Committee wants all outdoor displays prohibited. Unfortunately, we cannot agree to that, there is a Family Dollar, excuse me, a Dollar General on the site that has been there since two thousand and eleven. They have, as routinely part of their business practice, propane tanks outdoors on the sidewalk and an ice machine. We ask that the stipulation not include outdoor displays of those two particular items, which are part of their business practices and expressly permitted in the lease that has been with the Dollar General on this site since two thousand and eleven. We're afraid that if that stipulation prohibited the propane and the ice machine on the outside, that we may lose this anchor tenant. That said, we have essentially agreed with everything that Mabelton has asked for. And so we ask that the application be approved today with the nine stipulations as drafted by the applicant and the exhibits that are attached. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak for this application? Okay, not seeing any, we'll now hear from opposition.
Hello, my name's Steve Young, I speak on behalf of the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. We're generally supportive of the application, however, there are some notable and severe problems, we believe, with this property. I'll go through some of them, and this is by no means exhaustive, but it is representative of some of the problems here. In this picture here, you can see there's three safe, what I consider safety issues here. We have two staircases around the perimeter which are in a decayed state, and they're lacking any kind of guardrails or safety rails. And this could present a safety hazard for anybody using these stairs. The third picture here is a sewer grate, I think this is on Powell Road here. And you can see the sewer grate does not completely cover the hole. And this also could present a safety hazard to pedestrians or small animals walking along Powell Road here. And we believe this needs to be fixed. This is the front curb here. The first picture here, you can see the concrete is decayed here, this needs to be fixed. It's unsightly, and it presents a potential hazard as well. The middle picture is stucco or drive-in, I'm not sure what the compounding is. But there's a hole in the building, and vermin and water can get in, and if water can get in, mold can get in. So this is, this is absolutely unacceptable. The third picture here is, is the curb along Powell Road there, and you can see that there is an erosion issue. The wall needs to be shored up, and the pavement needs to be fixed. The front of the building, we have these banners up, we think that this is, does not present a professional or attractive view of the front of the building. This is the Dollar General store that the applicant referred to. We don't specifically have a problem with the ice machine or the gas, but the, these recycled bins for the cardboard and the outside display are absolutely unacceptable. The fencing, which was alluded to, the wrought iron is fine, however, a section blew down and this temporary fencing was put up. This needs to be replaced with the same kind of wrought iron that the rest of the fence has. This is a, the landscaping, the insert are the islands, the islands are perfunctory, but there's no bushy or ground cover around the trees, which was specified in the original landscape plan, and this needs to be addressed. The other picture is the landscaping along Veterans Memorial. There's no curb there, so it's, it's very unattractive, and again, there's no ground cover or shrubbery to complete the landscape plan. And this is along Powell Drive, the two trees were put in, in the middle of asphalt. It's like they just dug, dug a hole in the asphalt, stuck, stuck the trees in. The asphalt needs to be taken up, and a proper ground cover needs to be put in, and landscaping, again, with a curb around there to make it look attractive. And you can also see in front, the pavement there is degraded and needs to be fixed as well. Here's another pic. Yeah, here's another picture of, of some of the parking lot. The, the paving is, is, is a mess. I mean, it's all broken up and inconsistent. It really needs to be torn up and repaved and restriped completely. Otherwise, it's, it's, it's just gonna be like this again in a year or two. And here is a curb along Veterans Memorial, you can see the curb itself is in a degraded state, and there's a pile of asphalt sitting there on the sidewalk that needs to be cleaned up. There's, this whole area here is a mess like this, it really needs to be addressed. And along Powell Drive here is another area that's eroded, and the erosion is occurring because there's no curb there to keep the water from running off the pavement into the area there. So a curb needs to be put up, and that eroded area needs to be repaired and perhaps ground cover put in, or something to make it look more attractive. The painting scheme on the building itself is really not very good. It's light at the top and dark at the bottom, which kind of gives a cavernous feel to the storefronts, which is very unattractive. This is a north-facing, you know, facade here, so it's never gonna get direct sunlight. So this needs to be addressed as well. And we just feel like all these changes need to be made. The building needs to be repaired, and it should be required no later than the first November of this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't believe there's anyone else here in opposition. John, can you give a staff's recommendation?
Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend that the board approve the request subject to the letter handed out today, eight twenty twenty-four, by the applicant's attorney, which has nine items on it with some timeframes, and subject to the fire department comments, contained in the other business packet, and all of the conditions not in conflict remain in effect.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you. If I would have the, ask the applicant to approach, please? Hi Linda. In our meeting, I think it was a week and a half ago, you mentioned during the meeting, as well as the applicant, that the property was repaved. And you also shared that in your testimony a short while ago. But if you would describe to us the areas of the parking lot that were repaved. Not resurfaced, but repaved.
The entire front parking lot and rear parking lot were repaved, resealed and restriped. But you will notice that in the list of conditions that was provided to you, I guess Friday, and then most recently this morning, that we have agreed in number seven to, as a stipulation, that the front parking lot must be resealed and restriped. The front parking lot was completely repaved, including new sub-area provided in twenty twenty. The rear parking lot was completely repaved, resealed and repainted in twenty twenty-two.
And you're contending that it was repaved and not resurfaced?
The front parking lot in twenty twenty, that's correct. However, we are willing to go ahead and agree to resealing and restriping. We did reseal, we did restripe it just last week, quite honestly, but in the interest of, you know, moving this thing along, we would be willing to go ahead and reseal the front parking lot. We don't believe that it needs repaving, because it was repaved in twenty twenty, and it's our understanding that normally that would have a viable life of about ten years.
John, can we confirm, or were we able to confirm, that this parking lot was actually repaved?
There's not a way for me to confirm it, because I don't think they submitted that to Cobb County, but is there any pictures of when they repaved it, Linda, or any kind of proof?
It was in twenty twenty, I don't have any pictures of the repaving in twenty twenty, no, I do not.
Okay, it's just, it's just that some parts of the parking lot are in bad shape currently, so it didn't last that long if it was repaved.
What was that last part, John?
There's some parts of the front parking lot that are in bad shape, and it just seems like it would have lasted longer than four years since it was repaved.
Precisely, okay. Also, my question for the applicant. Well, do you know when your client, or if your client secured permits for the tree peninsulas, or any other?
For the what?
For the tree peninsulas in the, in the parking lot?
We have, my understanding through community development is that absolutely everything has been permitted and approved by Cobb County with the exception of the three items that were here in front of you for, which is the final site plan, the landscaping, the painting of the exterior, and the architectural elevation.
Okay, and when were the peninsulas completed at the, at the, at the development?
When was what completed?
The peninsula, the tree peninsulas, when were those installed?
I'll have to refer to Tom on that, Tom. When were the tree islands installed? Last year?
Within the last year, and is your understanding that your client secured a permit for, for the tree islands?
My understanding is that all of the necessary approvals were obtained from Cobb County, that's why we met with them in March of twenty-four, to understand exactly what we needed to do from a permitting standpoint. And we were instructed to appear before you on these three other business items.
Also, is there a sprinkler system in the basement for the vocational school space?
I'll have to refer to Mr. Luters on that. Mr. Luters, is there a sprinkler system in the basement?
Yes, a fire sprinkler system in the basement for the vocational school space, that was a condition of OB five in twenty nineteen. So you don't recall? Okay, so you don't recall if there is a sprinkler system, okay.
And the vocational school is no longer in the basement. That is unoccupied.
Okay, but there is an occupant in the basement, is that correct?
No. It's vacant, the, the top floor is seventy-eight percent occupied, but the first floor is not occupied with a tenant at this point, is that correct, Tom? No tenant in the basement?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Sorry.
It's me not eating. Yes, we should not be having conversation occur to, um, the audience. In fact, if he can join you up here to help you answer questions, that's perfectly.
I apologize.
No problem. I do too.
Was trying to expedite matters.
I'm busy looking, reading. I wasn't paying attention. But yes, if any of your team would like to come up here and help answer questions, that would be, um, desirable so we can get them on the mic.
Okay.
If they'd like to approach, I don't know if.
Mr. Wooters, would you approach and take the oath and so you can stand here with me?
Okay, so regarding the tree peninsulas, now that you're here, um, I just wanted to confirm, uh, whether or not there were permits secured for the peninsulas, but you shared that they were installed last year?
My name is Tom Waters. Just for clarification, are you referring to the, the, the landscape islands? Where the six-inch concrete curbs were put in?
Yes.
We were under, the understanding that there wasn't permits actually needed to be pulled for that work. That work was, we hired a paving subcontractor. They came in, they, uh, cut the areas of the asphalt paving, and they, uh, installed the six-inch concrete curbs, uh, around every one of the landscape islands.
Okay. And John, would you confirm whether or not a permit is required?
A permit would be required. I'm looking at the permit system right now. It looks like two LDPs have been applied for in the past, but no permits have ever been issued for this.
Okay, okay. And part of the reason we asked that you receive a permit is so that we can ensure that the development is, uh, consistent with our county code.
And, and we do understand and appreciate that, Commissioner, but the whole point of our meeting in March of twenty twenty-four, um, with community development was to try to understand what permits and inspections were required. And we were advised that the, um, permits and inspections that were required had, had been approved and that all we needed to do was clean this up with the other business. So it sounds like we probably need additional clarification.
Sure. Okay, and you already asked a question answered about the sprinkler system that you were not aware of, whether there was a sprinkler system in the basement?
I don't recall. Uh, it, it, there's a stipulation for a fire sprinkler system in the basement. I was just, uh, talking with our architect, Roy Taylor, that this shopping center does not have a fire sprinkler system in it.
Right. I, I understand that, but in reviewing the file last night, um, in the OB five of twenty nineteen, when you all came before the board in twenty nineteen, there was a stipulation that, uh, that a sprinkler system would need to be installed in the basement for the vocational school space. Because at some point, there was, I believe, a beauty school or vocational school there.
Correct.
So part of that condition, the fire comments, required a sprinkler system. And I was just asking if that sprinkler system was installed?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. I understand that. I don't have any other questions. Do you guys have any questions?
There, um, were a number of observations in the opposition's presentation. Okay.
Any questions for, for the applicant?
I would just like to state, I don't want to be out of line, but with respect to the opposition's, um, outlining of, you know, all of the concerns that they had, those, um, concerns are all addressed in the stipulations, with the exception of the, um, list of repairs that he gave at the beginning, uh, concerning, um, cleaning up the curbing, repairing the stairs, uh, and off, uh, sewer grate, uh, curbing and concrete and a hole in the building. That's the first time we've heard about those complaints, but certainly, um, we will take care of repairing those.
Thank you.
But the other items are all addressed in the stipulations. The wrought iron fence has been repaired. Uh, the banners have been removed.
Okay.
So I just wanted you to know that they are in the stipulations.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, I, I thought it was quite interesting to see those two trees planted in the asphalt. Um, is that design intended to remain in that state or is there additional?
No, it is part of the, um, stipulation. I'm sorry. Finish your question.
I'm done with my question.
Okay, um, it is in the, it is in the stipulation. Um, if you take a look at... Oh, it's right here. If you take a look at, um, stipulation number six, that addresses that area. Um, it is a very small area. The, the stairs that you saw that, um, need repair, go down to that asphalt area where the two trees were required to be, um, planted as a part of the landscape plan.
Okay.
Uh, and our goal would be to remove the asphalt, install the curbing that is shown on the exhibits to the stipulation, mulch that area, uh, and install ground cover.
Okay, thank you.
And so in terms of some of the asphalt that was shown, I think that is, um, in, in the county right-of-way.
Interesting. Thank you for sharing that. And, go ahead.
And I'm sorry, and that, uh, that also leads to another condition that has not been met from the twenty sixteen hearing in that in the loading dock in any pavement other than authorized curb cut located on the county right-of-way is to be removed from within one hundred and twenty days. And it's still there, but I didn't find anything in your stipulation letter.
That is, that is not a loading dock, ma'am. That is a fire egress that is required.
It, it is not a loading dock, however, it is in the county's right-of-way.
Um, I don't believe those stairs are in the county right-of-way.
Not, not the stairs, ma'am. So on Powell Drive?
Yes.
On Powell Drive, there's asphalt that goes all the way to the street.
Correct.
And in the stipulation, it reads that any pavement has to be removed from the county's right-of-way. So the point that I'm making is there's asphalt that is in the county's right-of-way.
What is that number stipulation? That's obviously something that we have not.
Number thirteen.
And that is in the two thousand and nineteen stipulation?
Sixteen.
Two thousand and sixteen.
And perhaps Commissioner? Go ahead.
If, and, and that's all my questions. Thank you. And if we can have Ligia to approach, if she can just confirm that?
Yeah, and, and maybe I need help to understand the removal of asphalt from the right-of-way. This is not for purposes of a driveway for an egress in.
Right, but they still have. They still have in hardened surface in the county's right-of-way. Nothing is supposed to be in the county's right-of-way. So they had.
So should it be landscaped or grass?
It should be anything other than.
We have Floran, do you think?
I'm just concerned if they were to remove it, would it, would it just be looking like gravel?
Yeah, we'll let Ligia address that.
Can you please repeat the question?
Yeah, sure. Um, so there's a stipulation from twenty nineteen that reads, "The loading dock in any pavement other than authorized curb cuts located on the county right-of-way to be removed within one hundred and twenty days." So I visited the property actually on Saturday, and on Powell Drive, along the side of the building, there's asphalt that leads all the way to the street. Now, if you look north of this image, you'll see a sidewalk.
Correct.
But adjacent to this shopping plaza is just asphalt. So I just wanted you to confirm if their asphalt is in the county's right-of-way.
I will have to confirm that with you, but just from the GIS, it appears that it is, it within their right-of-way. And they will have to put carbon gutter and, uh, grass or whatever behind it.
Okay, okay. Would they be required to install a sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have for Ligia unless someone else has a question?
Yeah, I do have a, just a question out of curiosity for the, um, applicant.
Thank you.
May the applicant approach again? Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. I can't remember the occupancy. I believe it was forty-something percent occupied with seventy-something percent occupied upstairs?
Currently, yes. Um, seventy-eight percent on the, um, ground floor, the first floor.
The first floor.
Versus the basement, yes. And the basement is not occupied currently.
Is that a space that you plan to lease out?
Correct, but we are not able to do that until we get through this process and satisfy the other stipulations.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know if it was in disrepair or if it's a space that can be.
No, no, it, it was, um, renovated, um, on the inside. And so it, it is tenant-ready.
Okay, thank you.
But a sprinkler system needs to be installed there.
Any other questions, observations?
All right. Thank you all for joining us today. Uh, we covered a lot during this hearing, um, but there are still additional matters that, uh, matters to address at the property before approval can be considered. Um, while there have been improvements, and there have been a lot of improvements at the property, uh, we're here today because there are some conditions from twenty nineteen that have yet to be fulfilled. The submission of a site plan, which I believe has been submitted, uh, li, a landscape plan to include a wrought iron fence plan, which that has already been satisfied along Powell Drive. You saw in the presentation earlier, the chain link fence, but that has been replaced with the wrought iron fence. Uh, of course, also the building architecture and color proposal and repaving the parking lot. And as discussed a short while ago, removal of pavement in the county's right-of-way. Um, I visited the property on Saturday, the seventeenth, and I observed the following. As I mentioned, the wrought iron fence, that condition has been met. The parking lot has not been repaved, and I understand, uh, it, the applicant asserts that the property or the parking lot has been repaved. I observed numerous locations, both at the front and back and rear of the property, where the asphalt was missing. Uh, it's been resurfaced. There were parts of, um, uh, the asphalt in the rear of the property where it was just like hills, and it just wasn't smooth. So it's clearly, uh, has been resurfaced. The applicant shared that the property was repaved in twenty twenty, which was just four years ago. And I just don't believe that in a four-year period, it will have, it will look the way it does. The condition does not reflect, uh, a parking lot that was repaved. Uh, it, it's more in line of being resurfaced. There was a photo shared earlier where there was a before and after, I believe, from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-four. And my observation of both of those photos is that the parking lot looks exactly the same, with the exception of, with the exception of the landscape islands. Uh, my additional observations, um, it was re-striped. There are also areas, uh, which were shared in the opposition's pre, presentation that where there are three or more stairs that do not have handrails. Uh, there's crumbling, uh, crumbling concrete, which obviously presents, uh, safety concerns. I also observed that there does not appear to be ADA access to the business suites. And John, if you can confirm, this is probably grandfathered, but they would still be required to have ADA-compliant accessibility at the plaza?
Well, the property, I, I think the building was built in the early seventies, and I'm not exactly sure what the ADA requirements are. But I would think that for every new CO they've gotten in the last twenty years, they would have to show ADA compliance.
Okay, all right. Um, my further observation, uh, the parking lot islands, which we've already discussed, does not appear to meet county code, which is noted in condition number fourteen of July nineteen, twenty sixteen, BOC's zoning minutes. I did not observe any ground cover or landscaping at the landscape islands. And at least one of the islands had crumbling concrete. There's crum, crumbling sidewalk in front of several of the business suites, which again pose a safety concern, um, uh, for those visiting those businesses. Also, I observed the base of the lights, light posts needs to be repainted. The existing paint is fading and is chipping. And on Powell Drive, I observed erosion at the water meters, which that image was shared with us earlier today. And then, of course, the, uh, the large gap at the sewer that's not properly enclosed. And obviously, it presents a safety concern. And again, just to reiterate, the pavement in the county's right-of-way along Powell Drive. While I appreciate the applicant's investment in the plaza and the effort to satisfy the conditions from twenty nineteen, there's still quite a bit at this plaza that needs to be addressed before consideration can be given. So to establish a clear path forward for resolving these matters, I recommend that we hold this case, but I will ask the applicant, because I have a date in mind. But if the applicant can approach? There was a reference to November first. I want to say it might've been in Linda's stiff letter. Uh, a reference to November first. And if, um, if it's not brought into compliance, then there will not be any, uh, permits or licenses issued. But I think that with the condition of this property, it will be worth the county going out to visit, our building inspector to visit the property, as well as our arborist. So my plan is to hold this case into the October fifteenth Board of Commissioners meeting to address these concerns. You had a timeline, I believe, on our call was mid-October for landscaping as well. And you made reference to a November first date. So I just want to ask if October fifteenth would be doable for you or if you need to extend to November?
If I'm understanding what you're requesting, Commissioner, um, you are asking the applicant to, um, correct these issues that have been identified this morning. Does that include repaving the parking lot and, and resealing? I think, I just don't know about the availability of contractors and the availability of Cobb County inspectors. We would certainly like to have this resolved by October fifteenth, but we don't have control over the contractors and when Cobb County can come out and inspect.
Okay.
So we're willing to agree to October fifteenth, you know, with the utmost of optimism that we'll get this done.
That's fair enough. Okay. Okay, that's fine. That, that's all I have. But thank you. Thank you. I recommend, I recommend holding this case until the October fifteenth Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. In addition to that, I will require an in-person meeting at some point in September with the applicant, the county's chief building inspector, the county arborist, the zoning manager, and myself. And with that in mind, Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right.
Okay. I make a motion to continue OB... I'm sorry, I make a motion to hold OB forty-four, twenty twenty-four, to the October fifteenth Board of Commissioners zoning hearing.
Okay. I'll second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero. Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate all of your efforts today. We are now adjourned. Commissioner Berlin.